Good morning and welcome to the Thursday, January 7th, informational meeting of the Davidson County Commissioners. I'd like to call the meeting to order and you can take a look to your left and see where Commissioners Elliott and Truul and McClure will be zooming with us today. Madam Clerk, we'll start today's meeting with a roll call.
Here.
Commissioner McClure. I'm looking for him to join, hopefully he'll join within the next couple of minutes. Commissioner Shell?
Present.
Commissioner Shores?
Here.
Commissioner Truul?
Here.
Vice Chair Yates?
Here.
Chair Watford?
Here, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Elliott will lead our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our heads, dear Father, we praise you for this event and your purpose forward. We know that when we gather together, you always have a divine agenda. We love you for that. That even when we have done what you have asked, the results are so much greater than we could ever have imagined. Even in failed attempts, you blow us away with your faithfulness to provide us what we need. Our prayer is that today, that you will lead us and guide us and give us wisdom to rightfully do what we need to do for Davidson County. And that we can take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only we can through your provision. And Father, we know that we're reminded of your faithful provision when our efforts fail us or we fall short. May all glory go up to you when we reach the finish line and climb over our benchmarks. We thank you for every win that we've had this past year. We pray for our physical abilities, our health, and our mental capacities as we go through this new year. Father, bless this board, bless every member, bless every employee. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Let us stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize some special guests with us today. We have Senator-elect Jarvis with us today. We have Carolyn Potts, Representative Larry Potts-elect, and my husband Sam Watford. Department heads, thank you for being here with us today. The sheriff and all, Happy New Year, and thank you for being with us. We're going to begin today's meeting with a swearing-in of Representative Potts and Representative Lex, Sam Watford. We'll start with Mr. Potts.
Things have changed since I was last here. But thank you very much for allowing me to use this facility that I served in to be sworn in. Thank you.
Hi, Larry W. Potts.
Hi, Larry W. Potts.
Do you solemnly and sincerely swear?
Do I solemnly and sincerely swear?
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
Should the state of North Carolina?
To the state of North Carolina?
And to the constitutional powers?
And to the constitutional powers?
And authorities which?
And authorities which?
Are or may be established?
Are or may be established?
For the government thereof?
For the government thereof?
And that I will endeavor to support?
And I will endeavor to support?
Maintain and defend?
Maintain and defend?
The Constitution of said state?
The Constitution of said state?
Not inconsistent?
Not inconsistent?
With? The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
To the best of my knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and ability?
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Larry W. Potts?
I, Larry W. Potts?
Do you swear that I will well and truly?
Do you swear that I will well and truly?
Execute the duties?
Execute the duties?
Of the office of a member?
Of the office of a member?
Of the North Carolina House of Representatives?
Of the North Carolina House of Representatives?
According to the best of my skill and ability?
According to the best of my skill and ability?
According to law?
According to law?
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It was nice of your daughters to come with you, Larry.
Thank you, sir. I always appreciate your kind observations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Sure.
Larry, I remember when you and I were just young people. And when neither one of us really knew where we were headed in life. And it's been amazing to watch your progress throughout the years and the contributions you have made to this county and to this state. And as a citizen and as a friend for many, many years, I want to thank you.
Madam Chair? I would like to just say to Mr. Potts how impressed I am of the human being that he is. Not only is he a civil servant, not only has he provided many years of service to Davidson County, but he's also been kind enough to me to kick me in the butt when I need it and to give me instruction when I need it. And I consider him a friend and a brother in Christ. And I'm praying for his efforts in Raleigh. Congratulations, sir.
Madam Chair, may I say one thing? As a newest Commissioner here, I've known Larry a long time. And one of the ways I know him is through law enforcement, which is my career. And I would like to let everybody know and officially know that not once have I ever been in Larry's office that he didn't offer some way of help to local and state law enforcement. He's a huge supporter of our law enforcement, our troops on the ground. But more than that, Larry has been a friend to me for years. And he comes to me and tells me what I'm doing right, what I'm doing wrong. Gives me some very wise advice, and I try to heed that as much as I can. So Larry, I agree with the other Commissioners. Thank you very much for what you do for this state. Thank you for what you do for the county of Davidson. And thank you for the person that you are.
I had the privilege of swearing in Karen when she became County Commissioner two years ago, and she's going to return the favor today, I hope. Debbie, will you hold them? Thank you.
I, Sam Watford?
I, Sam Watford.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear?
Do solemnly and sincerely swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will be faithful?
That I will be faithful?
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance?
To the state of North Carolina?
To the state of North Carolina?
And to the constitutional powers and authorities?
And to the constitutional powers and authorities?
Which are or may be?
Which are or may be?
Established for the government thereof?
Established for the government thereof?
And that I will endeavor to support?
And that I will endeavor to support?
Maintain and defend?
Maintain and defend?
The Constitution of said state?
The Constitution of said state?
Not inconsistent with the Constitution?
Not inconsistent with the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
To the best of my knowledge and ability?
To the best of my knowledge and abilities?
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Sam Watford?
I, Sam Watford?
Who swear that I will well and truly execute?
That I will well and truly execute?
The duties of the office of a member?
The duties of the office of a member?
Of the North Carolina House of Representatives?
Of the North Carolina House of Representatives?
According to the best of my skill and ability?
According to the best of my skill and ability?
According to law?
According to law?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Madam Chair, you need to bring her up to sleep.
Sure.
George, they get to be out front. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Why don't y'all?
You want us standing? Larry, this is okay. Yeah, let me get by this glass, Casey. And there's this way, but if I move that way, I can't get in.
I'm gonna get on this side.
All right.
One, two, three. Do another one. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three.
Chair, you send him in.
He ordered two.
One, two, three. Another one. One, two, three. One more. One, two.
I need the wide angle. There ain't no where you want out of this corner. I forgot what it was like, though.
As big as you are, you ain't nowhere near where you got in out of here.
Thank you for coming. All right, we're going to move on to recognition of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for the fiscal year 2020 and the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for 2019. And congratulations, I'm very proud. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My guest Jane Keiker, she can either stand, you know, Jane's a employee of many, a few words. So I just know she probably don't want, she don't want to come to the mic. But this is not for that purpose, anyway. This recognition is really for, just to honor her and her staff, the county manager's staff, in terms of doing the budget. Two policy documents that display information in a way that citizens can read transparently, basically, is what these awards are for. Whether it's for our CAFRA on the financial side or our budget side, which is a lot more of a policy document, anything. It's a declaration of what we plan to spend money on every fiscal year as we start the year. So this is a national organization, Government Finance Officers Association, and they recognize counties and cities around the country. And this year, both documents got the award. This is the 33rd year in a row Finance Department has got it, and the sixth year in a row the county manager's office has gotten it for the budget documents. So we just wanted to recognize those awards.
Thank you.
Casey, I think it's worth mentioning the successful audits that we've had with regards to the budget, that we, how we spend our money and all that.
We've had clean audits for, you know, 33 years. Jane's been here for 25 of those 33. And I don't know, you know, anybody that does a better job than Jane and her staff at keeping track of money. And again, it's a two-fold operation. It's, you know, Jane deals with real money as it comes in. And the budget is, I hate to say it's, you know, it's a projection, but I mean, fake money, but it's a projection. It's an estimate every year, and by law, we have to do it. It's the biggest policy document we do every year. It's the biggest declaration or policy undertaking that you all take on every year. And so, and it's, one of the key things to do is you've got so many numbers and so many things that have changed. You know, governments struggle with, how do we display this to the citizens? How do we tell them in a way that people can understand, you know, without having a 500-page document? And it is 500 pages, but it's got a variety of things for people's taste. You know, presentation's at a high level, line item budgets, wherever your taste is, you can find it. And that's why it's grown in size. But it's designed to get people to help them understand, where is your money going? And that's our, that's one of the key goals of our offices, is if we can't explain it to everyday citizens where, what we do here, we probably don't need, we need to take a step back and rethink while we're doing it. So it's important to us to make sure it's clear and transparent.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Elliott?
If I could, I would like to commend, you know, Ms. Keiker and the finance staff and our county manager. You know, having a chance to see another county and hear from another finance director just about the excellence that Davidson County has, it really is a, it's just a badge of honor that I can bring back as a Commissioner, knowing that other counties are viewing the way that our county does things. And they try to mimic that. And we really have a good name in North Carolina. And that's a testament to the leadership that the previous boards before me have put people in place. And I'd just like to, just like to thank everybody for this. This is huge. So congratulations.
Anyone else?
Casey, I want to bring one thing up. If you remember back during, I think this was back during the summer, there was a conference call between Beth Woods and maybe the managers? And I didn't realize this, and I'm not sure if my fellow Commissioners do or not, but there's some municipalities and some counties out there that don't even balance their checkbook. They was in such bad financial shape because their checkbooks haven't even been balanced. So that goes to show how good this county's run. I mean, it never would have crossed my mind that what, they would have been some penalties that didn't balance their checkbooks.
I remember that call, and you're correct. And it's, but it's a team effort. It's you all, it's staff. And you never forget, you know, you all play the most important role. It's your budget when I recommend and give it to you all. And you're decorating to the whole world, this is what we plan to start the year off, working, finishing, spending our money. And I know we change it through the year, et cetera, but, and it's a good document. If you stop, our long-term plans here, I don't want to get off on a tirade, but Chris has got a really good point. I've worked in a lot of places, long-term planning. How do you strategize trying to get, you know, how do you build in a big project when you're not wanting to go up on taxes? I mean, that's ought to be everybody's goal, you know, working in government. So it is here, anyway. And we, so we start to try to figure that out early as opposed to late. You'd be shocked as to how many people wait till late to try to figure that out. And that's why sometimes it becomes a tax increase problem, because you waited a long time to try to work through it. So we don't do that here. We start with projects early, we start to talk about them as a group, and then we try to figure out where, we try to prioritize them. We're going to do these first, we may push these back, et cetera, and then we start trying to work through it. And that's very, very important. And once staff has a blueprint for, okay, I think the board's wanting to move in this direction, it's easier for us to start to figure out, can we not do it? Or do we have to slide timeframes back? So it's just very, very important. And it's not just projects, if you think about it, it's how we run the whole government. It's pay studies, it's insurance, it's how do we fund additional staff in key areas when service levels are changing so dramatically? It's fighting viruses, it's doing all kinds of things. It's all of it. So a very, very important task.
I think one thing, Madam Chair? I think one thing of importance is the recognition of what this county's gone through this year with the pandemic. And been able to make the necessary adjustments with not a real vision as to what the income's going to be, the rest that's going to be coming in from taxable resources, for example. And to be able to make those adjustments, but not forget those adjustments, then go back, like, you know, like we did a couple of meetings ago. But if you set yourself in stone, and then something like this pandemic comes back, you sit in here like, what do we do? What do we do? Well, it seemed like we knew what we were going to do. And it's cooperative effort among the staff and the leadership of this county. And, you know, I'm very proud of how we've come through this and how we continue to evolve as this thing goes on. And I do thank everybody involved, our Commissioners and our staff, and everybody who's made this thing and sit back and said, hey, we're working as a team here.
It starts with you, although if you know
Yeah, we're working as a team.
If the long-term plans don't work from you all, it won't work, and that's key. And I have a friend who's a manager in a large municipality in this country, I won't go into states, and they have a tough time with long-term planning. Part of it is they're trapped between big urban areas, and they've got a lot of competing interests. And that gets tough, I know. But we do a good, we're a very excellent job. And the committees work well, you know, they work well. All of you do. When you're on the committees, we've had school committees and business park committees, radio system committees. They work well because you all figure out how you want to do things. By the time we come out here, it's just, everybody seems, more everybody's in the know on the playbook of what we're doing, then the better off we got, a chance to get the support to move things forward.
The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Koontz has requested that a COVID-19 update be added to the agenda as Agenda Item 5E. Are there any other changes to the agenda? May I have a motion in a second to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Have a motion in a second. We're going to have a roll call vote.
And I believe Commissioner McClure has to win the meeting.
Okay, welcome.
Commissioner Elliott?
I do. Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Truul?
Here.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That vote passes by the 7-0.
Thank you. Items for discussion, decision, information, and deliberation. Mr. Martin will lead us off in performance-based budgeting and annual report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, you all should have a copy of this year's Performance-Based Budgeting Report. This is for fiscal year 1920, that just ended on June 30th of 2020. Just to kind of give a little bit of background information about what exactly is performance-based budgeting, particularly with us having a new Commissioner on the board, that may be helpful for Commissioner Shores as well to get a little information there. The Performance-Based Budgeting Program is a voluntary program for departments that they enter into basically keeping performance metrics for their department. That would be for workload or for efficiency. Based on those goals and guidelines, which they work with the county manager's office and our budget analyst in our office as well, to help develop those goals that helps to identify efficiencies in their department. If they reach those performance measures, if they meet the goals, they are actually able to bank up to 8% of their department budget in savings, whatever they save that fiscal year within the budget. So now, one thing to keep in mind is a lot of the savings come from salaries. This is, to give credit to the county management that has been here historically and that is here now, as well as the leadership that is elected leadership, there's a heavy focus on fiscal responsibility. Departments discretionary budgets are kept pretty lean. You know, it's very, very tight. So the savings typically come out of salaries there. But the savings that they are able to use during the year with the money that they bank, they're used for one-time expenses. They can be capital expenses, major purchases, things like that. Things that don't have an ongoing expense that go with it. So basically, right now, we have 24 departments and divisions that are participating in the PBB program. I'll start kind of really high level. As it sits right now, there's about $3.7 million currently banked in the PBB program. That is down by about $200,000 from last year. So the departments are slowly spending their savings down as part of the program. The document has a lot of information in it, but I'll just kind of highlight a few things here. Couple of major purchases. And I like to, thinking about this over the last week, preparing to, for the meeting today, I do want to tap into the pandemic as well. A lot of this, this was done during the pandemic. Business continued to move. Things happened. And the departments still performed with excellence. Were able to bank money, were able to make major purchases that typically would not be covered in the budget. They're not in the budget. So these are things that prevent, that allow the county to keep the tax rate at 54 cents. So by having these bank savings, we're able to do that. Just for example, Charlie Brushwood at the landfill was able to purchase a new bulldozer, almost $200,000 purchase. The library, if you haven't seen some of the renovations that have been done at the Lexington Library, it's fantastic. About $53,000, $54,000 worth of renovations there. The Health Department has done some interior renovations there as well, a little over $100,000. EMS purchased new cardiac monitors to outfit their vehicles. Parks and Recreation added bocce ball, or excuse me, that's Senior Services added bocce ball. Parks and Rec put in a new playground at the Linwood Park. And at the very last page, you'll see, there's a summary there of just several other items. And one I'll point to, from the county manager's office, I mean, we use some of the savings that we had banked to help other departments as well. To help Parks and Rec purchase a new truck and trailer. And then one big one was to do our leadership training for department heads, which was pretty intense. An intensive leadership training that took place, again, during the pandemic. We had to take a long pause to pick it back up at the end, but that was a major accomplishment there as well. So don't want to belabor that too much. But there, also within the report, you'll see on page 10, we highlight some of our achievements as well of our staff here at the county. Starting, obviously, with Jane, as Casey talked about a minute ago, with the GFOA recognition. The county attorney received an award this year as well. But the big one this year is our PBB Employee of the Year. And just wanted to give a little bit of information about Kristi Smith, who is our PBB Employee of the Year. She has worked for the county for eight years. She works in our Senior Services Department. Again, during the pandemic, there was a major transition of programming to virtual programming. Kristi assisted with that. And then on top of that, continued on with delivering meals, taking calls, and has been described as the Energizer Bunny of their department. So Kristi is here today with her husband and son, I believe, and I would like to call her up
Okay.
to give this award to her.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And if we can give her a round of applause.
Yes. I am very, very honored to receive this. It is a privilege for me to work for this county and for senior services. So thank you, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
You want to get together?
Yes.
Where do I need to be? Oh, well. I need to put my mouth up. I believe that. One more time. I'll be out here for lunch. I believe it is, you got small.
Over Christmas?
I'm going to tell you, either I got bigger. Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Kristi.
I think we, you need to know, are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So I think we need a consensus to accept this report. Gentlemen, do I have a consensus among you? Okay, I believe we do. We'll move on to item number B, which is facilities use. Mr. Martin will also lead this off today.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I did distribute, put out to you guys before the meeting, a much larger version of the matrix. Okay. Basically, staff has been asked to research just general information from other counties as to how they handle use of county facility and county property. as to how they handle um, use of county facility and county property, uh, and also as well for any kind of special event permitting or anything like that. Um, what you have is just a quick summary of what identified as the really high-level um, issues there. If there's use of county property, does the county provide uh, or require a certificate of insurance? If there's an event, do they allow food? Do they allow alcohol? Um, one of the big questions also was who would actually receive any applications? Uh, should that come directly to the board? Does that go to the County Manager's Office, to another department? Um, do they have any kind of review committee to look at them? Uh, what are the timelines, and who gives final approvals, and then as well fees? As you can see, there's, there are some um, similarities, and there are some areas where these ordinances are kind of scattered about. Fairly common that um, that the counties require some form of insurance to be posted. Um, alcohol is kind of split fifty-fifty. Some are willing to do that, some uh, do not permit it, or they do it on a special one-time occasion, uh, something like that. Food in general seemed to be not allowed, um, but if there was, they brought in environmental health. Like, if there was a food truck brought in, the food truck had to be approved, uh, be inspected by the Environmental Health Department. And most of these, what I found, went through the County Manager's Office for the applications. Few different situations here. Uh, Alamance County went through the Sheriff's Department. I think that one is kind of um, an outlier that, I think that there was something more specific to, to the logic behind that. And again, the review timeframes, uh, these are, they scatter all about again. Some as early as, you know, within seventy-two hours of the event, and some they want ninety-day notice. Um, and some they allow scheduling out up to a year out. So, it is kind of a little bit all over the place there. Uh, it's not uncommon to require a deposit um, that is refundable or to have a small administrative fee, you know, for processing the application. Um, at this point, what staff is really looking for is just direction as to if there is an appetite of the board to look at adopting some kind of policy or an ordinance to deal with this, and if so, what is really important in that? What would you guys like to see in it? Um, so a, at that point, I'll just take a step back and take any questions at this point.
Anybody big question for Chuck? Define agenda. Event, I'm sorry, not agenda. Define event.
Well, I think that would be part of the, the definitions that would have to be set out of the policy.
Okay.
Um, I, you know, I, reasonable people could certainly differ on that.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems to me that a lot of, a lot of the events would be um, perhaps fundraisers, you know, I, I wouldn't-
Parks and Rec events?
Yeah.
Now, there is a, a current policy that um, Thomas, and I believe is going to talk about on the next agenda item, that deals specifically with Parks and Rec. But I think the, and the expectation for this was to talk about other county properties and to see if there are areas which traditionally have not been used for by the public or for special uses as to whether there was an appetite to look at those. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, it is, and, and the ordinances, the policies that are listed in here, most of them deal with exactly that, the properties that are not in Parks and Rec. Uh, there are some that are specific, like Chatham County, it's specifically Parks and Rec properties. That's the only thing that exists. Um, but most of these are talking about their courthouses, other, you know, grounds, uh, and other properties that they own.
So, if I'm hearing right, you would, would you support a separate policy that was existing for Parks and Rec, and then another ordinance or a policy that would define the rest of the county properties? Is, is that what we're looking? And that would make sense, since Parks and Rec would need to have the proper personnel there and know exactly what kind of events is going to be happening on the parks, you know, in our parks and things of that nature. That would make sense.
That's the intent, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna chime in just a second to what Chuck was talking about, and that may help clear it up. In May of two thousand nineteen, y'all approved ours Rules and Regulations for Parks and Recreation, and I'm gonna read you number thirteen. It was approved. It says alcoholic beverages to pres- excuse me. The possession, consumption, and/or sale of beer, wine, and other alcoholic beverages is strictly prohibited without prior written approval from the Davidson County Parks and Recreation Administration. So, at that point, y'all gave us the right to look at it and look at each one of them, like he's talking about, per event, and look at it and see how we want to proceed with it.
Okay.
So, there is, there is a policy in place for Parks and Rec.
Okay, so we're just looking at mainly other, other parts?
Others, others, okay.
I guess my question would be is what facilities are we talking about? Two that come to mind would be uh, the courthouse and Wilcox Bridge. So, what, what other, uh-
Board of Elections.
What, I think- Because right now, basically, all we have is that, is that one-page liability form for the square. That's what we've used for years.
We have the square. So, I guess what I'm trying to do is get in my mind, which properties do we own that, of course, you know, this, this is pretty vague here. It says any county property or whatever.
Haven't historically had any requests for any other facility, usually other than the square. And again, we have the one-page-
Historic museum.
Huh?
Historic museum?
That is the square. To me, that's the whole thing. That's part of the square to me.
Okay.
So, the square's been the, the place where people come and ask for that form, that we gave them to sign. It's basically a liability form. If you tear something up, we've got your name and number, et cetera. You know, what brought this on, the impetus for this, was we did have an event that was requested of us at, during the, during the elections in the election parking lot. Um, that paperwork never made it to me. I never saw anything about it. So, I had to ask those individuals, you know, you can't have that. And there was a lot of other reasons, you know, it was liability concerns. They were having, gonna, they were requesting having to bring children there. Can't have children in the parking lot running around with a costume contest or something of that nature when we're trying to hold an election as well. So, had all kinds of challenges. That brought this conversation on. Um, and so we just tried to take a look at some of these other counties. If we ever had a request for, I guess, any other building other than the square, and we could wrap this up in the square as far as I'm concerned.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the form works okay. The problem with it is you have to ask a lot of questions about what the event is, and then you kind of get into this picking and choosing of events. You know, who is going to be the arbiter of saying no to that event, but yes to this one? That's really, that's one of the real challenges of this. You know, that was an easy call for me because, again, it was a safety thing.
Yep.
If we'd have had two hundred people show up in the parking lot, who was going to control the crowd? Whereas, there's tons of risk management concerns there, so that was an easy thing there. But that, that got into, do we need something formal if we ever have somebody ask us? If they don't meet the check boxes, then we have a reason to say, you know, a lot more reason to say, no, you don't have insurance, et cetera. You know, even pay a fee, you know, one of those kinds of things. Um, so it was more for a discussion for this morning.
What kind of event could be had at the courthouse? I'm like Commissioner Yates, I'm not really understanding why we would, what, what event would we have at the courthouse?
On the lawn of the square, we have folks like want to do, like we had recently someone wanting to do a toy uh, Christmas drive.
Yeah, right.
You know, right on the, um, again, not at the courthouse steps, but right over in the grass, right across the street. So, again, to me, that's basically the same area.
We're talking about the historic courthouse, not the new courthouse.
Not the new courthouse.
Okay, right, okay, okay.
Right.
And I think in the past, maybe we had somebody wanting to do a wedding reception or something there, or they wanted alcohol there.
I think it was Arch Davidson wanted to do something up there, and they wanted to have, they were having, um, I think it was on-time catering, do their catering. And on-time catering was going to serve alcohol as part of their fundraiser, and we could not allow it because we don't have a policy in place to allow them to serve alcohol, and we had to tell them that they couldn't.
So, it could be anything, I guess. If you open this up, I mean, anybody could say, I want to rent the old courthouse and have whatever type of function they want to have.
It would be like Commons on Green that the city has.
Right.
And I know that they looked at that policy as well.
With no more events than, with no more events than we have, why can't we do it the same way we do the fireworks, honey? Um, we have it on a case-by-case basis, and they bring us, you know, all the information, who's going to do the fireworks, what their certifications are, where it's going to be held, what time, and all of that. And let's just, maybe just require seventy-two-hour notice beforehand. And then that way, we don't have to get any big elongated system.
Right now, we require fourteen days.
The only issue I see with that is kind of like Casey says, how do you pick and choose who you say yes to and who you say no to?
I know, I know.
The fourteen days that Debbie's mentioned, that's, that comes from the bottom of that form that basically says, I, it may be in your package. You put a sample of that form in there.
Yeah, it is.
So, it basically comes from us letting the city know, like the cruisers, you know, we have those, and they used to fill out the forms. Uh, here lately with the pandemic, they haven't been doing anything. Um, but when they fill out the form, they let us know. It gives us time to let them know, because it's a coordinated effort in terms of, you know, policing and that kind of thing. But uh, fourteen days is a lot of ti- a long time for me. I mean, I can make, make the call pretty- And if it's, like the toy drive, you know, question I had, you know, Debbie and I talked about it, that person submitted, it was just a few weeks ago, actually. Um, you know, I wasn't, they weren't going to have, they were going to adhere to all the coronavirus stuff. They weren't going to have people congregating. They were just going to have people come by, pick up the toy, and go. I was fine with that. I had no problem with it, because it wasn't going to be a big crowd up there.
So, we do coordinate with the city to make sure that they know that we're approving events, because even though the property belongs to us, the sidewalks belong to them. So, that way, we know, that they know that we've got something coming up that way, and they know that if they, if they think it's something like Bike Nights, I think that was what originally created some issues, because we approved Bike Night. They came to us and approved it for approval, and we didn't vet it through the city. So, we came up with a policy, and that first Bike Night was just a nightmare. Um, and so that created the policy to where we sort of vet everything through them, and they let us know. And we try to work in coordination to make sure that, that they know what's going on up there, and that they've got enough police on, on hand, or that they know that they, that they may have to have something else going on up there. Um, and we coordinate to make sure that we don't have too much stuff going on at one time. I've actually got a calendar that lives in my Outlook, that I put all, anything that's going on at the square in it to make sure that we're not overlapping anything. And in the past, that was, that, you know, that could be an issue during the pandemic, not so much, because we really not have anyone using the, using the area up there.
How many events have we had on county property in the past year? I can't recall very many, if any, except for this thing over to uh, Elections that day.
Well, with the pandemic, we really have-
No, you're correct. It's, it's not very many. It's not very many, and um, you know, for the, for now, we can handle it as far as making the call. Again, for me, that was an easy call. Um, I think, you know, the folks might have got upset at us for it, but I've got to understand the point of view. I can't have children running around a parking lot with cars and things like that. If that was going to be in the requir- and that was, I actually checked the dispatch. That was the claim of, you know, basically having costume party and ice cream and things like that. I don't know who was going to show up, and nor did they. And so, when you can't plan for that kind of thing, we can't have that in a parking lot of, of our elections.
Casey, you said you could roll, you, you mentioned rolling everything into the same thing that you use at the courthouse. Instead of a new policy or, or something of that nature, can we expand on what we're doing currently to encompass some of these ideas, or would that work, or do we actually need another policy? What is the recommendation, Mr. Martin, from what y'all have looked at?
I think that, that you could, that the board could do that. I think that you could take what's existing and expand on that um, and use that as your, as your basis if you wanted to do. And, and in my mind, I'm seeing this as two different issues, two separate issues. One being, in general, using a piece of property. Do you, does the county want, if there is an event, do we want to have an insurance certificate posted with us? Are we going to allow people to have alcohol if they want to rent the, um, the courthouse to have a wedding reception or something like that, and want to serve wine as part of the reception? Um, that's one piece of it. The other piece being, if there is a special event in, to what Casey was describing at, at the Board of Elections, what was talked about there, there's a lot of moving pieces that go with that. Um, if that was applied for, and there was a week of being able to look at that, is there a need to have law enforcement presence there for security purposes? Is there, if they're going to serve food and ice cream and things like that, do we need to have it inspected by the Health Department? You know, those things, that could be something where, to Commissioner McClure's point, an event would be, as it comes in, it could be brought into the board, and here's a review group that looks at that, and here are all the moving pieces that need to go with it. The use of, just use in general of the county property, what we currently have, the form, having um, some kind of an amendment to that, also stating in general with our policy, you know, there, there will be no alcohol allowed there, you know, those kinds of things.
One of the easiest things maybe to do is just not have events at any other property other than the square.
And, yeah, beat me to saying it.
And not being allowed at all. And that's actually maybe even easier.
For an example, I remember somebody talking to me about this several months back at Wilcox. They wanted to have food trucks out there, you know, some sort of alcohol tents, I mean, have some sort of function. So, to do that, do you allow food? Do you allow food trucks? Do you allow, I mean, you know, and that could happen at- Now, one of my questions is, is Wilcox handled under Parks and Rec?
I think it, we can handle that under Parks, yeah.
Yes, yes. So, see that, that's-
Well, that still wouldn't handle food and that kind of stuff, um, you know, for, for that example, unless it's in the-
I'm gonna jump up again. It's, it's in our regulations too about food as well, but we require them to get a help permit. Has to be pulled from the food truck, uh, help permit or whatever for the, even if it's a caterer, we gotta have-
I must not have read all the rules and regulations, because I'm not so sure I would have voted to give y'all that authority to, to do that at the Parks and Recs. I mean, I appreciate what y'all do, but that's a big undertaking there for-
Well, and that's the reason I, the next item I've got, that's the reason I'm bringing it in front of the board.
And I'm just saying, that's, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but-
Because at the time when we approved this, and I know I'm kind of getting, stepping off yours and into mine a little bit, Mr. McClure brought that up, and, and he brought up a case-by-case basis. So, this is our first case that we have that we're looking into doing that, so I wanted to bring that in front of the full board. So, I got your opinion. So, I'm not making a decision. The metrics we put in place to look at it is what you're talking about, is we carried to our Parks and Rec Board, and we discussed it there, and we passed it there. And that could have been the end of it, but what I wanted to do was to bring it here, like Mr. McClure said, and do a case-by-case.
I get all that. I'm just saying, I'm surprised we really gave y'all that authority to do that, because, you know, the financial risk stops with us up here, you know? Uh, as far as-
And unless y'all have a problem with it as it goes forward, when we have these, I'm still going to bring it back to the board, just like this information meeting. Because if y'all say no, we're done with it.
One idea could be, now that we're just, we're just talking about this out in open, is maybe the Facilities Committee looks at these, as Commissioner McClure said, on an ad hoc basis, and makes a recommendation to the board. Because he's right, we don't have these a lot.
I'd like to just comment real quick. You know, we have two Commissioners sitting on the Recreation Board. I know there's three Commissioners that sit on the Facility Committee Board, and it's the, you know, it's the mindset of the Commissioners that's on the Recreation Board that we communicate with the whole Board with any decisions. That's why we sit on that. So, um, I think, you know, what Thomas is doing is bringing this before the entire Board for a general consensus for all of us. We're not going to allow the Recreation Board to make decisions that's not going to have the, the Board's full agreement in session, or at least I, I, you know, I know I'm not. So, I think that's why he was bringing this up before, uh, y'all today.
And I kind of wanted to set some precedents heading forward as we handle these, just like what y'all are actually talking about here is, you know, I know what the rules say. Me and, me and Mr. Frye has talked about this, but at the same time, we also thought it would be good to bring it here to get the Boards, to, to give you knowledge of it, let you know what's going on, so if somebody asks, you can explain it as well. You're not caught out in left field not knowing about it. So, even though it's written in the rules that way, I still, unless you have some issue with it, I still don't have an issue bringing it to the informational meeting and us making a decision, just like I am on this one.
No, I think that's a great idea, and the reason I say that, if something was to go bad, that's when it goes bad.
And, and there's-
I mean-
And there's three Commissioners sitting on my Parks and Rec Board, uh, and then, when I come here, so that way I have three Commissioners know about it before we get here, but then also every one of you know about it, because Parks and Rec serves everybody in the county as well, and it may be somebody in a different thing, and I want to make sure everybody gets their information before we have an event like this, because we expect this event to be pretty good.
Let, let, let's go back to what we were originally, because I think this is a subject we'll talk about when you make your presentation, but let's, let's talk about the old museum. It's been mentioned about wedding ceremonies. I'm opposed to wedding ceremonies that, at a location where there's valuables stored that could be taken, because that's going to take a lot of security to make sure that people roaming around that courthouse are, are, and I'm not saying people do, but we all know that they do, you know?
Right.
We all know, but we all know that it-
We all, but we all know that they do, I'm not so sure about, uh, a wedding ceremony at the old, at the old museum. Because there's a lot, we have a lot of valuables there that cannot be replaced. So I think that's something we need to think about, you know, but, and how many weddings have we ever been requested to be there?
Now, that's just an example that I.
Yeah, I mean, but, but it could be that, I mean, it really, it could be.
And maybe it wasn't even a wedding.
And things like that, like for Arch United or some of the awards and things that are, that are exist in the, in the city. Um, the majority of the time, we use the upstairs of the historic museum, to be perfectly honest, it's for our own purposes.
Well, and if, and that, that gets back to, some of you have hit on this, so if the courthouse, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying Mr. Shell's speaking for everybody, but if the courthouse would be quote unquote off limits, inside of it, meaning, that pretty much narrows the square out. It becomes like the form we're using now, which is the grass. And so if that's gonna, and that's predominantly where our events are, maybe this is a moot point. Because if there's no appetite for events at any other facility and Thomas is covered under his policy, it pretty much leaves everything out.
All right, let me ask you another question, let's move on to the Board of Elections. Instead of making policies as of what is required to hold an event there, it, would it be possible, and I hate Chuck left, oh, there he is. Would, would it be possible to say there will be no events during elections? Uh, and, and you know, when elections are being taken, taking place, whether early voting or general elections? And le- and any others be a discretionary anyway, but that, I believe that, I believe that's the time we need to make sure that the Board of Elections is, is, is protected to do what they're set up to do, and that is to, for people to come vote freely without interference, so.
I don't know that that restricts anything to you or anything, I don't, I think that's reasonable.
It's just common sense, I mean, you know, it is.
I mean, that's basically.
Again, if we don't have a situation, I'm sorry, if we don't have the situation where we have all these events, the, the event's gonna have to come before the board anyway. So if we, if that's gonna be the, the, the way we handle it, then there's no sense in having individual, um, guidelines for this property or that property. The two things that I think of that the board needs to take into consideration, one is alcohol, the other is firearms. Because we don't have an ordinance in this county, uh, about carrying firearms on, on, uh, government property. So, I mean, you know, I think that, that, in my opinion, if they just bring it, like you said, you got people serving on two committees. If you bring it before both of those committees and then bring it before the full board, I think you got a, enough people looking at it to where you can make a decision.
Well, the, the only, only thing, the reason I was mentioning Board of Elections is we had, you know, if we don't have something to prohibit it, they just show up. They don't have to contact the board, just show up. And then, and then we don't really have anything in writing to say that we can call law enforcement to help remove them if we have to.
In this case, they asked the Board of Elections, and it's my understanding from asking this question five times, I got the same answer. They were told to submit the same request to our office that anybody else does, I never received that request. So in that, in the absence of that, there was no request to even consider. Um, so we went, you know, again, that's not even counting the liability and the safety concerns that were apparent at the time that it was going to occur. Um, you know, I was, I'm saddened that it was late in the game when I had to tell them that, you know, but that's kinda the way it worked out. So, I had no problem stopping it, it was just kinda unfortunate that it got to that point, late in the game, so to speak.
And, and be honest with you, with this new day that we're living in, I'm not so, not so sure, you're not gonna see a lot more of that in the future. And I think our, our Board of Elections needs to be protected, instead of just sitting back and not doing anything, I mean. I just don't see the harm in prohibiting any activity, any activity, don't have to specify, any activity other than voting during the election process.
I mean, I agree with that part for the Board of Election property.
I do too.
What are you gonna do about the people who show up with their tents and all of their paraphernalia while the people are voting? Is that, would that be considered an event if they set up a tent?
Well, that's a good que- that's a good question, how do we handle that?
That gets back to the definition piece of it, my, using that at one event as an example, we told them if they were passing out voting literature, fine. You know, that I'm, I'm, we're not getting into First Amendment issues, et cetera, so, but it was not gonna be a carnival.
But again, what size tents, you're right, I mean.
There's something concerned about the safety of the tent, if you have it out there on the parking lot, is it adequately secure?
Right, yeah.
Kind of wind.
Pick it up, throw it on top of somebody's car, and next thing you know, you know, we're in, squabbling with the owner of the car, et cetera, or hit somebody. Um.
I know a lot of people don't use the, the, the early voting process to pass out your, your, your information. But when it's a hundred and five degrees down there, those candidates come together pretty quick and start sharing an over, overhang, you know?
And I'm, I get that, but how do you tell one organization they inhabit them and one that they can't?
I see what you're saying, yeah, that's, that's a good point that Commissioner McClure brought up, that's good, we need to try to define that, how we do that.
And what's good for one's gotta be good for everybody, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
You know, since, since y'all are mentioning that too, if, if that's gonna be the case, then these, uh, judges and everybody that uses the old courthouse to have a swearing in and stuff like that, we also need to look at that, because there's been multiple times, they've used our facilities for a special use to be sworn in on a Saturday or something like that, so. Uh, we, we definitely wanna be transparent and equal across the board.
Commissioner Elliott, they have gone, they have used the form that we have, and we have arranged for, um, county personnel to be there when they've been in the building.
I under, I understand that, what I'm saying is if we choose to do away with that, and they would not have the ability to, to be able to use those facilities for that purpose.
Only thing I see a little bit different there, they elected officials. I mean, the people.
Yeah, it's a government event, I mean, it's not something being held by outside people, it's a government event. I get that, but, you know, I also don't wanna be a hypocrite and hold myself differently than I would a citizen, you know? But I, I, I see where y'all coming from.
So, right now, we're having a case by case scenario, correct, Mr. Smith?
With a, with a one-page liability form.
Yeah, th- this one that you have, has shown us right here.
Correct. Being largely used for the square, to Mr. Shell's point, though, I, now I'm more sitting here thinking about, I mean, I, you know, I go back again, use this recent history as my proxy for what I would do. And again, I would not do anything any differently. I, it may be easier for just no events, no tents, no nothing. If you wanna hand out literature in your hand, as a human being, walk around a parking lot, fine, you know, that, that we can't stop. But no tents, no gathering part of it, no anything.
And then you're infringing on, um, freedom of speech, you know?
Not if I let you hand out the literature, just no tent. You know, no, no.
Just no spec.
Obstruction.
Yeah, you got a point there.
If it's a hundred and five degrees, you still wanna show up and walk around and hand them out, it's fine, you know, but I can't.
What happens, what happens with chairs and stuff like that? You know, because even during election time, you have people sitting around with chairs and, um, all that, would that be deemed something else that could be inappropriate? Would it just be physical people and literature?
That's, and that's what I'm thinking, but Chuck could have to help me, and that, without doing this, I'm kinda doing it on the fly without looking at other county stuff, and Chuck can help me what I'm infringing on what I'm not. I'm thinking yes to your question, no chairs, no tents, no anything, if you wanna hand out literature, that's fine, you bring the literature, you hand it out. It makes it a lot simpler to regulate. Cause a chair.
I, I don't like that, just to be honest with you, that's just for me, cause even, I don't have elderly people helping me, but I've seen multiple people that have elderly individuals that like to sit down in a chair, they don't necessarily get within that span that's illegal, um, to the Board of Elections, but that's, that's just one vote out of seven, but that was my opinion. You could narrow that down by saying a, a semi-permanent structure, and that would take care of the tents and stuff like that, but it would not, it would not cover the chairs.
I, I myself can see the point with, I mean, I've used a tent out there myself, because like Commissioner Shell said, it gets, gets pretty warm out there. Um, but I, I can understand also windy days, tent getting blown over and something like that, as far as the chairs go, I don't, I don't understand what a chair would hurt. You know, bring a chair out there and, and set it down, um, I don't think it.
And, and see, I get both sides of this, there's nothing wrong with the tent till it's in a tent that you don't agree with, or something's written on it that you don't agree with.
Sure.
I like that's point Fred was trying to make.
Or if it's a group of people in the chairs that you don't agree with, on both sides, you know, I mean, whoever, so that, there's where the issue comes in, and.
Well, I, I do agree with Commissioner Elliott in the fact that this needs to be fair across the board, and I think that we should ask the, you know, the, the comment was made, well, that's government officials or those are elected officials. But to me, I'm no better than anybody else, and I don't, I think that there shouldn't be a double standard, if, if Joe Citizen can't do it, then I can't do it. So whatever we come up with, I, I, I would like it to be fair across the board and imparted equally to everyone.
Well, and I agree with that, the only point I was trying to make once, I mean, if you're elected official, that's a government building, I mean, the people elected you for this government position. So that's a little bit different than having a birthday party there, or having, you know, I mean, that's just different. I mean, that's, it's a government building, these are government elected officials, so, and I'm no different than anybody else, I, I don't want to use the courthouse myself personally for anything, but you know, if a judge wants to be sworn in there, I, I get it, that's kinda their elected position, uh, so I, I just see both sides of it.
I, I agree with that, Commissioner Gates, um, I also agree with, uh, Commissioner McClure as far as, from what it sounds like, from what we're being told. There's not enough, I don't think there's enough events, we'll use that word to justify another piece of paper that somebody's gotta come up with. Maybe, uh, if we could get Mr. Fry to review the, the current form we use and update it and make sure that it checks all of our boxes and everything that needs to get done, would, would that be satisfactory?
Well, I'm gonna go back to what Mr. McClure said, one of the issues seems to be, it's, it's a difference between if you open it up and then if you have alcohol. If you don't open it up, then you don't have to talk about the alcohol, correct?
Well, the alcohol ain't the thing for me, I mean, that's not even where I'm going at this point in time. Where I'm going is, everything's fine as long as you approve it for something you believe in.
Right, is it right?
But when something comes in front of you that you don't believe in, even though they got all the boxes checked.
Or go to the voting, go back to the voting scenario, leave the tents or, um, and the chairs and things for, for, for passing out voting literature. And Chuck can help me with that one if that's something, and, you know, cause I think it sounds like we've done, people are doing that now.
And I think.
That's what they are.
And then, uh, but not for any other event other than the voting purpose, if that makes sense.
And I'm like James, I mean, I've been out there, I've stood under tents, I've done whatever, you know, I mean, so I get all that part. And again, I go back to freedom of speech or whatever, where's my freedom stop? And yours start, you know? But again, you hear people also say they don't like all that out there, that when they go to vote, they don't like having to walk through all these people hanging out in the tents, you hear that too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but again, if you allow the tents for one party or one organization, you gotta allow it for whoever shows up there with a tent.
But why, and I'm good, I'm saying.
Why would we allow the tents, I mean, we can just make a, a blanket statement that you can get, you can show up, if you want a lawn chair or a chair to sit in, that's fine. But there's no semi-permanent structures like tents or, uh, some of them operate out of the trunk of their car. The, the other thing is, is a lot of them are, are, are bringing foodstuffs out there as well as drinks. Um, the only thing about alcohol, as Ken brought it up, is we don't, at present, we would need an endorsement on our insurance policy to cover alcohol.
That's right.
Um, and the reason I say that is, even if the people who were presenting it had it on theirs, uh, that they were going to, um, have insurance to protect alcohol. It would definitely come back to the county as the county has approved that event.
Have y'all checked on the alcohol deal with our insurance, um, agent?
I have not, not with, with our current insurance, I know, uh, when I did my research, um, there was a few counties that did require liquor liability insurance. And they required that the county be listed as a co-insured on it, uh, but that's a little bit, at least my limited understanding of insurance, that's a little bit different than having basically some kind of a, an attachment to our, our county insurance, uh, to cover that.
I mean, I think our county insurance would wanna at least voice in on their exposure.
Sure, sure.
Cause like Fred said, it all rolls back down to us, or.
Yeah, and that was one of those things in my mind, I kinda saw as part of the next step, so this was something, then we need to look into that to further broaden that picture.
That would, that would help me get to the next step, you know, knowing what our insurance company said our exposure was for, um, and these other counties, surely they've looked at some of their exposure as well.
Well, do we, do we need to have, uh, Mr. Martin work on some additional information for us? Do we have an appetite to, do we have an appetite at this point in time, now that we've had discussion for a while? Do we have an appetite to have, have a policy set with specifics or, or not, I guess that's what I'm saying. Yes.
Here's the deal, when they said something earlier about it going through two committees, maybe the Parks and Recs and then the facilities and then back to the board, that takes time.
It does.
So with reading some of these in this piece of paper here, you would have to have an application in thirty days in advance or forty-five to.
Yeah, probably ninety.
Yeah, maybe ninety, you know, and that's a long time to have an application in, um, and I'll be honest with you, as a Facility Committee member, I'm not real crazy about, um, you know, saying let's move forward with this or not, I mean, of course, you'd go back to the full board, but then, again, that's a lot of responsibility, it's all good till something bad happens. And then, when bad happens, uh, there's where it's at, the airport, I remember a while back, maybe the airport had a little something, would that be considered? No. Authority, okay, so I just wanted to know how that rolled out.
You know, we have, we have a situation where, um, with our Rules of Order, you got Roberts Rules of Order, and then you got Davidson County Rules of Order. Uh, we could have the same thing, we could set up, uh, not, um, something for the public, uh, distribution, but just for the board to go by if, uh, if an event is presented, that way we don't have to make a, a decision on this activity or that activity.
I don't know, this is, um, to me, this would.
Have we moved on to Parks and Rec?
No, no, we're not there yet. We just need some direction on, or consensus, or perhaps it's time to send it back to Mr. Martin and, and work on it some more.
But.
I am fine, whatever the board wants me to do.
Or are you, are, are you, are you, are you pretty settled on how you feel about this?
I think there's been enough questions where we could send it back to, uh, to Jason to go ahead and, and, uh, flesh out some of the points that we've been brought up here and then consider it.
And then, then you can come back with it and we can have an up and down decision, I guess.
Uh, Madam Chair Commissioners, would you all like for me to bring this back to another informational meeting? And I could do that maybe by the February meeting.
I mean, I don't know what else you can bring back to us, other than, other than the insurance question, it would just say, as other than that, I think you've got everything that you can present to us here.
Okay.
It, that's my opinion, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board members say, but I mean, I agree, something needs to be done at the Board of Elections, what, again, I'm not sure. Um, cause again, as long as it's something you believe in, everything's great, if it's something you're against, then it's probably not so great. But again, where do you draw the line and say, and I'm like Steve, everybody deserves to go vote in an environment where they don't feel intimidated by whatever you believe in. Or don't believe in.
And I think, just, and I'll be brief on this, going back to the, the situation at the Board of Elections, as my understanding of, of the events that transpired. Um, this is where it's, what happened there would be considered an event, because it really wasn't tied to any kind of distribution, is my understanding, distribution of election materials. So, we're gonna have, you know, face painting, costume contests, cause it was on Halloween, all, all of that, that is more of a special event type situation. It just happened to be on Board of Elections property, um, and as it was communicated to them by the county manager, there was no issue with distributing materials that, you know, that's your First Amendment rights. Um, and as it was communicated to them by the county manager, there is no issue with distributing materials that, you know, that's your first amendment rights. Um, but the liability piece of that, if, if a child got hurt there or something like that, because it, they were, uh, blocking traffic or anything of that, that nature. It kind of, and I'm talking this out loud, just to kind of come back to looking at it from, as a special event and saying, define what is a special event and this cannot occur on Board of Elections property. We're not saying you can't set up tents for candidates and distribute information. That's all bound by election law. And, you know, I'll defer to Chuck on that. I'm by no means an attorney. Uh, but that's where I say I see it as two, kind of two separate issues. There's two pieces to that.
You are. Uh, and, and when you get right down to it, uh, that property is used for a lot of other activities. You've got the emergency services and that sort of thing there. I don't, I don't see it as a good place for, for any kind of an event, um, personally. I, I just don't. Uh, there, we have other prop, places or pro, pieces of property, I'm sure that could be used, uh, that I can't think of. I mean, there may be, but I, I just, with, with the activity that's going on, the buildings and, and the buses coming in and out and that sort of thing. I just think it's a bad place for an event, period. And if, if we take that, you know, and, and take out the voting scenario and the tents and that sort of thing, then it's easy to say, no events there.
I, I would agree.
Talking about one isolate, one, you're talking about one group that promotes a, a specific agenda. And if that's allowed, you got, at, at the least, you got two other, you got three separate parties. What if y'all decided to put on the same thing out there? If he can do it, I can do it. You know, this type of thing. You end up with a mess. And that's not what the Board of Elections is intended for, for peo, people to go and, and have reasonable assurance that they can go in and vote without being intimidated or have a place to park without running over children, you know? And I think it's an issue that, that somewhere, I don't, I'm like Fred, I agree with what Fred said. I don't know how we, I think it's something we really need to take a look at.
Uh, and Commissioner Shell, I think you, you made a very good point there that you're, if you do allow an event and it's, you know, and we'll, we'll add the politics into it. If it's one party doing something there, are you going to allow all three parties there, um, at the same time? Or if there's not enough room to do that, how do you prioritize who's there based on days and things like that? Goes back to, uh, Chair Watford's point. This is not a very good spot for.
In the past, you had common sense. You had people of every party, of every candidate that stood out there and they'd hand out a card or hold a sign up. You know, it was reasonable, but it's getting to the point of being ridiculous now. And we have to protect the, 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 the integrity of the vote, the polling place. I mean, I, I just felt duty bound to do that as a citizen, not as a, a party affiliate, but as a citizen. Every citizen should have an equal right to go vote without intimidation.
See, here's what I agree with. That's two separate issues. The Board of Elections and the voting process and these other properties we're talking about is two separate issues. So let's break it to the side and work, you can work on that one and come back to us. Now, we don't, not only have that one, you're talking about early voting, you have, you know, some places we're contracted with that we have early voting. We have some other properties that the county owns that we have. So it's not only Board of Elections, it's, I think if you're going to do it with one, you gotta try to do it with, with all the other properties, cause they could set up house at all the properties.
And thinking about this, this morning, I, I realized that there have been three occasions in the last twelve years that the county has been approached for the use.
I can't hear the county attorney.
I apologize, Commissioner. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I apologize. I, I realize that in the last twelve years, there have been at least three occasions in which the county has been approached to rent courtroom A at Courthouse to be used for commercial filming. And that, that has been done, uh, on each of those three occasions that I'm aware of. And it's one of those things that is particularly unusual, but, and not something we would anticipate in a policy or an event such as this. But it had come back up before the board. On the most recent occasion, uh, they moved in on Friday evening after court had recessed and were done by Monday morning before court reconvened.
Now, who gave them permission to do that? We, we gave them permission.
And again, this is reaching back a few years, but, um.
Is that Bon Jovi's event?
I think it was.
When he done the movie here?
One of them was.
Yep.
I remember, I remember the title of the, or the working title of the last movie, which I don't believe has ever been released, was, was Witness in Security and, uh.
I gotta get to our son by Bon Jovi that day at the house.
But it's one of those, I guess it just reflects that even with a facility or special use policy, there may be times when events that we could not anticipate will come along. The county manager and I did not anticipate there'd ever be a request to have a carnival in the parking lot at Board of Elections. Several years before that, there was a request to have a, um, town auto show, uh, in that parking lot. And so these things don't come up particularly frequently, but when they do, they seem to be unique in nature. And I agree, Commissioner, there is a, a distinction between, uh, electioneering events at the Board of Elections and the types of things that, um, Mr. Martin was bringing for the question.
I agree with Todd. They're separate issues and we need to take them separately.
I don't know, the, the, the mirrors are, but I think that's probably the best approach, just to get them separated.
Madam, Madam Chairman, this is, this true, I, I'd like to say one thing. I've, I've been listening to this and it seems like we're getting hung up on the Board of Elections. Was this event supposed to be inside the Board of Elections or in the parking lot? If it was in the parking lot, that's a park and ride lot here in, in the Lexington area.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's for, and it's for our transportation, it's for our nine-one-one center and not just for the Board of Elections. So the Board of Elections would be a, a, all separate thing, I think, uh, as far as voting and things like that. And, you know, I, I've looked over this list and I've listened to, to what y'all have said. And, and really, before we looked at these various counties and what they do, looks like Orange County's got pretty well everything covered and they even got some use codes where we can add to or take away, uh, various things. I'd never like things just to come before the Board of Commissioners. We, we know what our job is. We know what our county manager's job is and I like the fact that these type things come before the county manager and let him make decisions like he, like he's authorized to do. But, uh, I just want to throw that in, uh, I do, I think we do need something, I really do. But just want to say that. I, I just, I know we got hung up on the Board of Elections, but I think it's more than just the Board of Elections there. It's a whole complex. Uh, so we're talking about the parking lot, I think. Or am I wrong on that or was it inside the Board of Elections? I don't know.
No, Commissioner Trolle, you're correct.
So it was really in our park and ride lot. And we, we keep saying the Board of Elections, but it's in our park and ride lot.
Correct. The, the parking lot encompasses a lot of things, right?
That's right. And, uh, so we could say that that's in our transportation lot or our nine-one-one center, which I agree with Todd and, and a lot of the others. Uh, uh, those, those things shouldn't be in our nine-one-one parking lot or transportation parking lot, I don't think. But anyway, that's here and there. I just want to get my two cents into it. Thanks.
All right, all right Commissioners, let's, let's move this along. What do you think? Would you like Mr. Martin to separate this issue, come back, come back to us with, um, with something that addresses the, um, Board of Elections portion? And, and then, I ca, I can't get where we have a consensus about whether we should allow, um, use of county property or not. I don't, I don't, I'm not hearing that. Uh, I'm not hearing a yes or no on that area, um.
Madam Chair, what we've done in the past, just, just to throw that out there, and it speaks back to what Chuck was speaking about. Um, when we had something that rose to the level where, and it hasn't happened since Mr. Smith came on, from where Mr. Hanner or Mr. Pyatt were not comfortable with it.
Mm-hmm.
He brought it to y'all.
Okay.
I mean, using the same form that we had, and that's what they completed. I mean, we spoke with them on the phone and they completed what they had. But when it rose to a level that he just, neither one of them felt comfortable signing off on it, it was brought to the board for acknowledgement.
Okay.
I mean, it's a complex issue. It's a very complex issue when you start talking about all the properties is owned by the county.
Yes, yes, it is.
And how you gonna move about making it, uh, good for one, not good for somebody else. So I guess it hadn't been broken a while, let's don't, just don't mess with it right now.
Leave it as it is?
I, I agree. I agree with Commissioner Yates.
Okay.
What Commissioner Short said to have Mr. Fry look at the document to make sure it really does cover the county.
Yes.
That's, that's right.
Yes.
It has not been updated. That, that is the same form we use that's been in place since I started in two thousand and three.
And, and you mentioned the insurance.
Yeah, if they don't have alcohol or something, if we do it on the Parks and Recs, they gotta have them.
Are we, Miss, Commissioner Shell, does that, are you in agreement? Commissioner Trolle?
Oh, yes, that's fine. I think Debbie's, Debbie, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, Mr. McClure. And, 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 and you are too, uh, Commissioner Trolle, okay?
Yeah, uh, I'm okay with leaving it. I was, I'm still concerned about the Board of Elections, but Commissioner McClure made a great point. And I don't know how you separate the, the, the various events or how you tell us, one group no and one group yes, you know, I, I, I agree with it. I think that needs to be looked into.
So that, that needs to be clarified, very, very, very much clarified there, right? That's what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta figure out if we're gonna do something, what, what we can do that's gonna be fair. So I say, I agree with Todd, leave it as it is now and let's see what we got.
Okay, all right, all right. That's what we're gonna do, all right?
I'm clear on the direction.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready to move along. And of course, come back, you know, well, this is something we can discuss at a further meeting. Okay, we're back to Parks and Recreation. Mr. Smith is going to lead this off and then I think, uh, Thomas.
I'm gonna just turn straight over to Mr. Marshburn.
Uh, good morning again Commissioners. Uh, what the Parks and Recreation Department is asking for today is we'd like permission to do the Leprechaun Classic Disc Golf Tournament at Hughes Park, um, for St. Patrick's Day. And, uh, this has really come from our people using the facility. They want to do a tournament and they really want to do it with some kind of, uh, alcohol being served there when they have their tournament, because that's what generally other people do at their disc golf tournaments. And so what we look to do is, um, partner with our local, uh, breweries around here in Davidson County and do a beer garden with the, uh, disc golf tournament. And, uh, we're maxing the teams to fifty teams and without even promoting it or talking about it or just kind of asking people's opinion. We've already had eighteen teams say they'd be part of it if it got approved. So, uh, as you can see, there's, there's people wanting to be part of this. But again, as, uh, Commissioner Yates brought up a while ago, because this is alcohol and everything else and as Commissioner McClure brought up a couple of years ago about, uh, looking at each event, we carried it to our Parks and Rec Board, explained everything there, and now we're also trying to bring it here as well. And for point of clarification, uh, the county attorney made me aware that we did take the food thing out of our rules and regulations as well. But as you know, if you serve alcohol, you gotta have food. So we're planning on having a couple of food trucks there that day as well for this event.
I think you're making a, um, opening a door if you serve alcohol at any, um, event that we have. And my, my problem is this, we don't have insurance to cover that, uh, so far as I know. Most of the insurance applications apply for liquor liability separate from general liability. So if we don't have the insurance and we allow people to come on our property and drink and they leave from there and have an accident, kill somebody, injure somebody, it's coming back to the, to the Board of Commissioners.
That, that's also the reason we, we're doing this through the sponsorship with TRIP, as you know, the, uh, tourism partnership in Davidson County. Um, they have the liability insurance to cover this. They do for the barbecue festival every year. And that's the reason we're doing this in partnership with them as well.
It doesn't make much difference if the event, um, has liquor liability or not. Uh, I'm sure that the people who have the liability have a, a limited pocketbook. So it's pretty much going to come back to the deepest pocket, which is the county. I know that, uh, you know, Thomas had talked with me about the, uh, the fact that a lot of the people that play in these go to different, uh, areas of, of counties and municipalities that, that have, uh, the same layout with the, the alcohol. And it's kind of a, a, I guess it's what they look for to, to be in the tournament. Uh, I'm personally against the alcohol. Um, I, I know what he's, he's talking about there. He's talked to me. Uh, and, uh, and I think the, the Recreation Board passed it and there was only one vote against it. But, uh, that, that's just my two cents.
Well, you know, and I'm on, I'm on these boards and I struggle with this too. Um, 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 you know, and I, I don't, I don't, I don't even know about this, um, disc golf anyway. And they, they tell me that, um, there's a lot of people that do this outside the county, within the county. It's, it's kind of a, you know, it's a regional thing that, that goes on with people. And I know they're looking to raise money, um, and, and they feel like the attendance will be better, better served. And, and, um, so, you know, I, I do struggle with both sides of this. Uh, responsible, um, people that, that are responsible with their alcohol, you know, I'm in support of them. Those that are not responsible are, are the ones like Commissioner Yates talks about, uh, about, uh, getting us in trouble. Uh, and, and if Fred knows the insurance element, um, if he, he, if he truly thinks that down the line it would come back and hurt us, of course, I don't think any of us would be interested in, um, that occurring and us taking on that kind of a responsibility. Um, it's one of those things that's kind of a, a chance, uh, that we take.
There have been, there have been suits against the county for people stumbling on the thefts growing up, that the county didn't, um, make sure that they wouldn't stumble. It, it's the slightest thing is going to create a, a liability situation for the county. The other thing is, is we're not just looking at this one event. If you allow alcohol at this event, then all the events down there at the Wilcock Bridge would probably are going to be more and more and more. Um, you can hardly say, well, you can't have alcohol down there.
Well, and I, I know that's one of the areas that certainly is looking in the future toward events there, you know, and activities because, um, we want it to grow, we want it to get bigger than what it is. And, and, um, the passion is there with the group that organizes the Wilcock Big Bridge to have full-blown, large activities that encompass.
And we're trying to do a lot of that through fundraising.
Yes, yes. So I'm just sharing with you.
Thomas, what's this, what, what is this event for? What are they raising money for? What, this, this is going to the Friends of Davidson County Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay.
As, uh, Commissioner Yates knows and, uh, Debbie and, uh, Jason. We had the, uh, concept plan that's gonna come to y'all for, uh, at the next board meeting. The concept plan was paid out of the money that the Friends of Davidson County Parks and Recreation Department has in TRIP. We've put, uh, refinished the floor over at the Davidson County, uh, West Campus, the basketball floor. We've redone that with the money that comes in. So when the money comes in, it goes into that five oh one C three account and it's held till we have a project that we need to use that funds for. So that's kind of what we use this, this comes in for.
Okay.
And we, we've got a big group, and Karen knows this, we've been on the Parks and Rec Board, of pickleball people. And they're doing a lot of fundraising for us to do outside pickleball courts. And that's gonna cost about twenty-four thousand dollars. So they've raised about eight thousand towards that so far. So, they've raised about eight thousand towards that so far, and we're continuing trying to get to that twenty-four thousand number so we can put the outdoor pickleball courts in at West Campus.
What, what kind of regulation with, with the alcohol? Let's say the board decides to allow this, and alcohol would be served. What kind of regulation is there? Do we ID, do we follow all the steps to the law?
Yes, sir, and also with our, with our thing, we're gonna give them, um, wristbands, and they only get two wristbands. So, we're only allowing people to get two alcoholic drinks per person there. So, that's coming to the thing.
So, no matter what I do, I can come and get two drinks?
Yep, you get, you got two, you got two wristbands.
Two forty-eight ounce drinks, or two twelve ounce drinks, or, I mean?
To be honest with you, I'm not that familiar with beer, 'cause I don't drink beer.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure, I just know that there's, it's what we like to serve at, um, the, the barbecue festival.
It's likely to serve at the barbecue festival, more than barbecue, cook off their pint glasses.
Pint glasses, but it's, it's beer, or is it liquor?
It's beer, it's, it's your craft beer that's made here.
Or the sliders.
Yes.
So, two, two pints of beer?
Yep.
And, and, and as you can see, they're trying to do something that's locally, you know, serving locally. And also, I asked the question about what time it was gonna be over with, and didn't you say five o'clock? Five o'clock, over at seven-five.
They're also trying to do something that's appetizing to the younger generation, in their thirties.
It hits the generation twenty-one to thirty-five.
Right, you know, it ain't most of us anymore, it's different.
I completely understand, you know, um, Commissioner McClure's reluctance and, and where he's going at. Um, I, I know anything can get out of hand, they could come there, you know, intoxicated, and add those two beers. Um, I, I still think that, I think in this particular situation, with it being regulated, the way you're saying, I think, you know, I, I would be, I would be in favor of allowing them to have this, so.
And our plans is, because this is our first event like this of any magnitude-
It's gonna set the stage.
Since I've been here, it, it's also gonna set the stage, but it's also gonna be something that I'm gonna have a lot of my full-time staff to be there at that event for the, so that way we can monitor everything. We'll have our part-time staff there and full-time staff there to make sure that everything runs as smooth as it can run so that it's successful, that we can continue to build off the success.
Thomas, will we have law enforcement there?
Uh, we can, I mean, we have a-
I think you, I think we should.
We have a thing with Davison County Sheriff's Department.
They need to supply their own law enforcement.
I know in the-
They need to hire their deputies and supply their own law enforcement. We don't need to be putting law enforcement out there at the county's expense. Just let them hire the, the deputies, the security that they need. And another question, Todd, and you can probably answer this, uh, better than I can. The legal limit for, um, DUI is point eight, and two pints of beer in a short period of time is gonna be point eight, is it not?
Not necessarily.
No, I don't think so. I think they say, uh, point two percent per, per, uh, beverage, um, that would be a point four, um-
If you're drinking at both at the same time.
Um, yeah. The, the actual, uh, the actual calculation is zero point one-six-five.
Okay, question.
So, you're very close, uh, Mr. Yates, but I just don't, in, in, in good faith, I honestly don't think that that would get them to a point oh-eight. And as far as the law enforcement, that was gonna be my recommendation. But what we can do is, we can have, they would be responsible for paying the sheriff's office off-duty, but we can require them to have law enforcement there. I know when I worked with the High Point Police Department, and we had the, uh, Fourth of July thing, um, the entities that put that on are the ones that paid for law enforcement. But the, the city required them to have law enforcement there, so, um, Madam Chair, I don't know if that's in an ordinance or how we would do that, but I would like to see them be required to do that.
We do that now with our athletic events.
Okay.
Because they kinda got out of hand, so we have deputies at our athletic events.
If we could require them to, which they would have to pay the sheriff's office, you know, whatever their rate is, but require them to have law enforcement, yeah.
And I'll just add to that, I know when I was, worked for the city of Greensboro, uh, was budget analyst for the police department there, same thing. Um, off-duty police was hired by folks that were holding the event.
Absolutely.
That's, that's very common, very common.
They have to get an ABC permit, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as long as they, they gotta, they supposed to follow the ABC guidelines and regulations. Uh, another thing that ma, this made me think about, what is the Parks and Rec's, um, regulations or rules about outside alcohol, uh, coming on to-
We don't allow it. We do not allow it. So, that's the reason I wanted, this is the first event that we've ever done like this. That's the reason I wanted to, I went through my Parks and Rec Board, and then I wanted to bring it here as well.
'Cause there's where your issue comes out. People come to drink too, but they bring six with them, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from outside alcohol.
Yes, right now, it's, it's posted, there's no alcohol.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Yes, yes, sir.
According to the, excuse me, if you, if you less, limit the alcohol on this one to what, two glasses or whatever, I, I'm thinking more of the Wilcock Bridge, where they might have an all-day event down there. And I don't know, are you gonna limit two drinks to everybody that comes to that? I think if you get two, one or the other.
I, I can tell you from Parks and Rec across the state, we've looked at this. Most of them allow you to have three drinks for a day event, and that's what we looked at here, but we stepped it down by one and decided to go with two. Just, just so that we're doing everything as we can to be as safe as we can, but meet the needs of the citizens as well. So, I mean, if, if the policy is two at the disc golf tournament, the policy to me would be two at the Wilcox Bridge.
Thomas, that, tag on to what Commissioner Yates asked you. Uh, you've done answered that y'all don't, don't allow alcohol to, from the outside.
Mm-hmm.
How do you stop it? Or, do you have somebody at a, at a gate checking?
We, we just come through, and we, we have part-time staff that works as well, and if we see it, we tell them they have to leave.
Okay.
So, that's, that's how we, I mean, to be honest with you, right now, we do have some people sometimes come out there on this disc golf tur, uh, course, and I'll have a six-pack in their bag of discs to go around and play disc golf, and we have to tell them they gotta leave, 'cause it's not allowed on premises.
Okay, and obviously, I'm asking these questions to get them out in the open, but obviously, if I walked up slopping drunk, you're not gonna sell me that alcohol.
No.
They can't legally by law, I think.
Yeah, no, no.
Thomas, I got a couple of issues. Um, one is this brochure that you're putting out here, what, is this a, is this a done deal?
No, sir. This is, this is what we-
Because I'm not, I'm not happy with the Leprechauns sitting there holding a, 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 a glass of ale. We're selling the disc golf tournament, not, not the beer. And I don't have a problem with the two, the city of Lexington, uh, Lexington Night Out serves alcohol. We got members that have been in golf tournaments that served alcohol, and it, you, you know, you gotta do it responsibly. If you limit the two, I'm, I'm, I think that's gonna be fine. But, um, I don't like a brochure we're sending out with a lep, the Leprechauns fine, I think it's gorgeous.
That, that's no problem.
But hold the bottle of ale, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think it's like we're selling, come on out and have some drinks and play some golf, you know, that's a side, side thing. And it'd be an individual choice, that's the word, I think they wanna protect that. But I'm fine with it, as long as you got a limit and restrictions on it.
Yeah, this was just literature, 'cause we have not pu, put this out to anybody yet. I mean, we've just been doing our research, getting ready, and like I said, I wanted permission of the board to proceed, uh, because we wanna make sure we're doing what the board wants us to do.
Like I say, lots of other places do this. They have Oktoberfest, and they have all these different festivals, seafood festivals that allow alcohol, so-
That's right.
This ain't nothing any different than a lot of other municipalities and places do, so.
All these festivals, though, are private festivals by private people, and they're not government-sponsored.
But this is not really government-sponsored, it's sponsored by TRIP, correct?
Yes.
If we have, if we allow them on government property, then we're, and in effect, as far as insurance is concerned, we're sponsoring that. Um, if you get some of these wedding venues, they, they have to have their own insurance, even though the people who are holding the weddings have their insurance. I, I don't have an, an issue with people drinking the beer or anything like that, but how, how do you regulate, and, and you know this, Todd, somebody can, can blow more than point eight, you can't tell by looking at them.
That's correct.
How do you know when they come on there, whether, I mean, you know, I just think you open up a can of worms if you allow alcohol at the event. Um, but I'm not gonna stand in the way of if that's what the board wants. But, um, I just think that it, it's a whole lot simpler if you don't allow it.
Well, one thing, Mr. McClure, is also, we're starting a tournament at ten-thirty for the first flight, the second flight's starting at twelve, so we're kinda figuring that they're go, the only people who's gonna be drinking is gonna be the people coming for the tournament. So, we're figuring they're gonna come and play the tournament, and then get their, and then get their two little wristbands after the event, to be able to get their, uh, alcohol then, if that's what they want. So, so we're hoping, I'm hoping somebody by ten-thirty in the morning hadn't already drunk a bunch, but you're right, if somebody's like that, they may, may have.
It may happen.
Commissioner Yates, Chuck's reminding me, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to Walt, because we, we're anticipating this is probably gonna add some cost to the, I mean, this event and any other future thing we try to do. So, I'll, I'll get with him, find out, but I think Commissioner McClure may have a, may have a point there, you know, about being on county property. But I will talk with him, they're the expert.
You know, you can get and see, but they have all this on municipality properties or whatever. These festivals are on municipalities' properties.
Oh, I know you can do it. I just want everybody to be aware, it's probably, it's additional, you know, everything's more cost when you start doing things with rider on it.
Check on that and see, I wouldn't think so, but just check and see, because part of that is, uh,
Because-
You know, and something else I'd ask that TRIP would do, if they could publish a, a number on their literature or whatever, to have a responsible way to get somebody home if needed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think that's, they can get a volunteer to do that, to where if they, they shouldn't have too much with just two, but if they've drank some before they got there, uh, at least you give the opportunity. And of course, your insurance company would like that too. You show them that they had a viable way to, uh, you sponsored them a way to get home, so it's not too much of a hassle.
I think that you ought to also consider, while you're considering this, the firearms, I think you need to have a, 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 a rule or ordinance or whatever that, um, if they're gonna have a festival, there are no, or an event, there's no firearms, either concealed or otherwise.
On the property at all.
Mm-hmm.
There's not supposed to be any firearms around alcohol, amen.
That's correct.
Mm-mm.
That's correct.
Mm-mm.
And I mean, that, to me, to be honest with you, Mr. McClure, I mean, I, I'm perfectly fine with adding that in our rules and regulations, not to have a firearm on park property, period, unless you're a law enforcement officer or concealed carry.
I, I don't know, I'm, I'm kinda, you know, I, I think if there's no alcohol involved, you know, I don't wanna start infringing on their, their constitutional rights. But if there's alcohol involved, I, I'm all for, you know, and like Commissioner Yates said, if they're drinking, they're not supposed to, whether they have a concealed carry or not, they're not supposed to be, uh-
It's absolutely a no-no with a concealed carry.
Not supposed to have a firearm, so.
Well, if, if there's no further discussion, um, we were just looking for a direction. Do you have enough information, Thomas?
Well, I, I believe I've got the, I've got everything wrote down, and I think Mr. Fry's gonna look into the insurance.
Insurance and get back to you.
Is a consensus yes, that we-
Is a consensus yes?
With the removal of the-
I have a yes here.
With the removal of the glass of ale.
I've got a disc golf.
Okay, so I have, and I have it from Todd, I have it for myself. Um, Commissioner McClure, consensus okay? I, I felt like you, you said, uh, okay.
To get further.
Commissioner Elliott, consensus, um, Commissioner Trow?
Uh, we're, I'm not really playing.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right. So, I, I think you've-
Thank you.
I think you have your answer.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you. Let's talk about zoning administrators and subdivision administrators with Mr. Smith. Good morning.
I should've put Scott on last.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First of all, let me thank you for putting it on the agenda for such a early part of the year. Um, as you know, referring back to my memo, Davison County Planning Department has about six ordinances that deal with the development and uses of land. And each of those ordinances have an administrator by law to be the authority figure. The reason for these administrators is there needs to be someone on staff that has the knowledge, the experience, and the authority to make the decisions, to make interpretations, someone for the staff to go to and say, here's a gray area, what do we need to do? And for the past, uh, twenty-eight years, Lee Crook has been, uh, our figure that we go to most often. He's got the most experience with our zoning. And, uh, for the past thirty years, I was given the task of enforcing, uh, the subdivision ordinance. Now, in decades ago, uh, when planning staffs were very small, and you only had these two ordinances, it was very common to have both of these positions under the hat of the director's position. He would carry all of them. But through the years, and as more ordinances became, uh, responsibility of the planning department and staffs grew, it became customary for these positions to be dispersed into the staffs, who, uh, the staff person who has the most knowledge of that. Uh, upon Mr. Cornman's retirement, that was his wish, that as he retired, these two positions that are still on field as of today, uh, be granted to the ones who have been involved in it the most. Uh, Mr. Crook with the zoning administrator, and the, um, myself as the subdivision administrator. Uh, the main difference between the two, they're the, the two most commonly enforced and used ordinances in our county. But as a zoning administrator, it is, it carries certain police powers and enforcement. And for that, he will need to be, uh, sworn in. Uh, I will not be, if it's the board's wish that we, we, we be given these positions of authority. Uh, I'll be glad to answer any question. Lee's here, he can answer any question that you may have as well. Uh, but, uh, but that's why we're here, is these two appointments.
Any questions from anyone?
Who's it sworn in by, Scott? Just curiosity.
Uh, Ms., uh, uh, uh-
I mean, it, it-
Ms. Harris is gonna do that.
Enforcement authority?
Well, Ms. Harris, as the clerk, will do the enforcement, or the oath, will, will say the oath just like she has for an enforcement, uh, a law enforcement officer, I would imagine.
Would I, I was wondering, would they go do the sheriff's department, or how would that, how would he get his authority?
I don't believe so. I think in the times past, and we've only had one zoning administrator for thirty years, so we, we really don't know, uh, what, what, uh, it came under that same hat that the one guy became the director thirty-four years ago, so.
I'm trying to figure out where he gets his authority from.
Well, he gets his authority both from the general statutes and from the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And the oath can be provided by any individual under law who is authorized to, uh, provide an oath.
I mean, I don't have a problem, I didn't, yeah, I have something new for me, I didn't-
Well, we, we don't remember when Guy got sworn in.
Been too long.
So, so Chuck, is it, would he actually have law enforcement powers, is that?
There are particular powers that are set out in our zoning ordinance. And it says under, it, under the zoning ordinance, it says, "The zoning administrator shall have the power to grant zoning compliance permits and certificates of occupancy, and to make inspections of buildings or premises necessary to carry out the enforcement of the ordinance." Part of this is simply from a procedural standpoint, when we, when we seek to enforce zoning violations, we need to make sure that we have an individual who is testifying before the court, who has the authority by law to enforce that ordinance.
Sure, absolutely, and I, I'm not opposed to the, to it getting done. I'm just trying to make sure that, do we need to have the, the sheriff swear him in as a special deputy? Or to give him those powers, or?
He just needs to be, uh, appointed as the, the county zoning administrator.
It's nothing to do with law enforcement, it's zoning enforcement.
It, it is, now, we talk about it under the general police powers of the county, but when we use police powers, that's being used in a generic sense, rather than a specific law enforcement sense.
I'm tracking, I'm with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? May have a motion in second to appoint Mr. Crook as the zoning administrator, and Mr. Leonard as the supervisor administrator.
Madam Chair?
I'm making a motion.
Okay, I think we've got several motions in a second.
Got three motions?
Well, I think y'all are in, uh, but we've got to have a roll call vote, please.
Clickers.
Not today.
I like that, I did, I just mashed all them buttons.
The Zoomers don't have a button.
No, they don't have a button.
Yes.
I can barely hear you, did you call my name? Mr. McClure says okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shale?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Commissioner Trow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
That vote carries by a vote of seven-zero.
Okay, Ms. Harris.
Thank you guys for that.
Good job.
After twenty, over twenty-five years' experience enforcing the zoning ordinance, it's a pleasant change being sworn in instead of sworn at.
I know, I know the true story.
I can tell you from being sworn in, sworn in, you'll still be sworn at.
I know the true story, gentlemen. Guy told you- Guy told you Shell is such a problem, it's gonna take two of you to handle this.
I, Arlie Crook, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof. That I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution and laws of said state not inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office. As zoning administrator. So, help me God. I, Arlie Crook, do swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of zoning administrator. According to the best of my skill and abilities. According to law. So, help me God. Thank you.
Thank you both. Alright, we have one more, one more item, which is a COVID update. I think Lillian will be joining us in a moment. Mr. Smith?
Ma'am Chair, I'm gonna turn this over to Lillian, but I think she's either, I think she's here. Chuck's just going to get her, but we thought it was about time for a quick COVID update, considering we've got these vaccinations here.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of things happening on the front of the virus, so I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy Saturday, happy new year, hope everyone's well. Because of the rapid nature of COVID nineteen, I did not prepare any slides, and so I just wanted to kind of update you all, because if you're anything like the Public Health Department, the County Manager's Office, you're receiving lots of questions about COVID nineteen, and I thought you might appreciate a baseline, um, of where we are. So, right now, at the Community College, um, the Davidson Davy Community College, that name change is kinda throwing a wrinkle into our plans, but, um, right now, we're vaccinating, folks. We have one thousand, one hundred and eight people scheduled from today till tomorrow. From what I'm hearing, um, traffic is less than fun for folks right now because they're trying to get a lot of people in a small space. But, I'm also hearing from our team that the individuals we are vaccinating could not be more grateful. There are tears, there are tries of hugs, and we're like, social distance? But, um, people are really thankful for what we're doing, so we're very, very happy to be able to give this to these folks as quickly as we have been. Davidson County was one of the earlier, um, folks to move into Phase One B, Group One, which is seventy-five and older, because we had moved through the majority of our One A, which was the healthcare and first responders, and we had supply. We are working very hard to do this in a way that is the most user-friendly way possible to get people in, but there is not a good technology system for it. So, right now, we are working on a week-by-week basis, because that's when we're told when we're getting the vaccines. Um, I don't know what we're getting next week. Um, we have nine hundred and seventy-five that were delivered this week, so there they sit. I don't know what brand we'll get next week, and I don't know how many. So, when individuals are calling at the rate that they're calling and they want us to schedule them out for appointments, we just can't do that because we don't know what supply we'll have. We also have received several requests to take names and numbers and call folks back when appointments are available. We do not have a technology solution for that. So, if we were to do that, it would require human beings with a live list trying to schedule people and not letting them fall through the cracks. So, if you called the person on your list and asked them if they were available for the appointment on Monday at ten o'clock, and they weren't able, and we didn't have an appointment they were available for, then we'd have to make sure we didn't lose that name and call them again when we had appointments. So, for that reason, due to the manpower that we currently have, we just have not gone that route. The final thing that I'm hearing a lot about that I thought you should know, the technology required system, um, is called CBMS, which stands for Coronavirus Vaccine Management System. Federal system has to be used for everybody that gets a vaccine. System will be great when it works a hundred percent, because we were told that it will allow for appointments. Right now, it won't, but everybody that gets a vaccine has to be in that system. If you have an email address and you're pretty good with computers, you can register yourself for that system, but you have to have your own personal email address, because you cannot duplicate emails, and you have to be able to do it yourself. That's complicated and frustrating, and there's nothing we can do about it. This morning, I checked in with Joel, the Health Department has received over forty-one hundred calls and answered them this week. Um, people are frustrated with the phone system. I've apologized to my fellow departments about, um, the Health Department crashing the phones on Monday. We're sorry, but that will likely happen again, and we apologize in advance. But, people really do wanna talk to us, they really want answers, and they want to know more. We have utilized a third-party vendor for an online registration to try to alleviate some of that, and trust me, we don't want to bring online registration to those who are seventy-five and older as an option, but with the phone calls, that's kind of where we were, we had to have a way to split it out. Individuals who were able to use it really liked it, um, and it worked well for them, but that too, um, filled up pretty quickly. Joel Hartley again helped us out with that, he gave us the recommendation for this, um, software, and I've already been asked by several other counties what we're using, because theirs trying to do everything by phone, and that's really hard. Um, I believe the last thing that I think that maybe will be most helpful for you to know about where we're moving next is, we are using local media, Facebook and the website to update as quickly as possible, and we're also answering questions and phone calls until late in the evening. So, um, our team is trying very hard, but if you hear something from somebody, well, I called and it's getting close to five and I haven't heard back, phone calls are being made well into eight, nine o'clock in the evening. So, any mails responded at that time. So, our team could not be working any harder, I, I don't know that they could, um, and we are on standby to work on Saturdays for this foreseeable future at the Health Department, and so we're trying to get all of our systems in place, but again, we're relying on a supply that we find out weekly what that is. So, without that, um, we're kind of hamstringing. Also, I would like to thank Commissioner Shores, I know that you got a phone call yesterday requesting some help, um, from us today, and you were able to secure that for us, so thank you very much.
Very welcome.
It, this, uh, is an all-hands-on-deck approach, and so we appreciate all the help that we've received, and the Community College has been helpful, you have been helpful, um, the sheriff has been helpful. He and I were talking outside, and they're trying to coordinate traffic right now. So, the Health Department's just very appreciative of everybody, and of course, our manager has, um, helped me out a lot, so you can't see my smile, but I am, um, he's really helped me out a lot, so I appreciate that. And, I'm just here for questions, if y'all have any.
I got, I got one, Lillian.
Yes, sir.
Alright, when you take the, the vaccine, it requires two shots.
Yes, sir.
Suppose it's time for the second shot, and you got, and I guess you, you got the vaccine out, right? And, the person has to come for a certain amount of time? And, if that person doesn't show up, and that vaccine's been out, it's to be destroyed, am I correct in that?
Yes, and, um, so, the vaccine is very fragile. We have two products. The Pfizer product is the one that we have, um, that, that comes in that nine hundred and seventy-five allocation, they're calling it a tray. Nine hundred and seventy-five is not accurate, it comes in a dose dial of five, but oftentimes, there's a sixth dose. No rhyme or reason, we cannot predict when we'll get a sixth dose, but we're gonna use it if we have it. So, we know we have at least nine hundred and seventy-five. That product has to be stored on dry ice or in an ultra-cold freezer. Out in Haynes has been very helpful, and we're dry icing that thing. It sits in a box, you put the dry ice on it, and you charge it for five days, and that dry ice is good for five days. You can open the box twice a day for no more than three minutes, I believe. Um, so, it's very fragile. So, I'm giving you that underlying to tell you, yes, when we have that Pfizer vaccine product, when we take it out, it goes into our refrigerator, where it can stay for up to five days. Then, it has to be used or discarded. When you take a vial out of the refrigerator to use it, you let it sit to get to room temperature for about fifteen minutes, you poke it. Once you poke that vial, you have to use it or discard it. What we know is that the first dose and the second dose are the same thing. So, in a situation where we're coming to the end of the day, we have meticulously booked our appointments, and everybody's supposed to be here, and it's four-thirty, and that last appointment for their second dose is not here, we're gonna call somebody and get them on for their first dose, because it's the same product. So, it is, um, oh, gosh, what night was it, was it New Year's Eve, Casey, that we were struggling? It wa, I mean, it is just, it, we can't throw doses away, we have not thrown a dose away yet, I want y'all to know that. Every dose has been used, so we're very thankful for our staff that, on New Year's Eve, left after seven o'clock.
So, you don't pull a dose out into the patients actually at, in the facility, right?
Well, the dose just sits in the vial, and so, we're booking appointments, so the vial's there, we draw it up when you're there, in the needle.
Yeah, you get it out of the refrigerator, draw it up, and then inject.
It, it can sit at room temperature, I'm more familiar with Moderna, because today's our first day with Pfizer, but the Moderna product can sit out, I believe, for six hours.
Okay, and so, but once it's out of the refrigerator to sit out, it cannot be used again if the patient does not show up?
Right, gotta find somebody else to get it.
Okay, but it, a diminutive, that it has to sit out from the refrigerator is five minutes before injection, is that correct?
I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen minutes?
Yes, sir.
Do you ever pull any doses out before the patient gets there and re-
We pull vials out before patients get there. A Moderna vial has ten doses. So, if you have, you know, uh, uh, we're, we have a vaccine manager who says, looks at the schedule and says, okay, today we have, right now, twenty people. So, the times that they're coming, we need to pull out the first dose to set it out for the fifteen minutes. And then, we look, and as we work through the doses, as it gets closer to finishing the dose, because like you said, somebody might not show up. We do all the planning we want, but if people don't show up in there on that ten, then some of the people that were meant for the original vial may actually push back into the other one, but we do not take the vial out of the fridge and just leave it sitting out. We wait until we have appointments booked, but we do pull it out before people get there, because if I had an appointment at eight and you had an appointment at nine, we could be working out of the same vial, and you wouldn't be there, and the vial was already out.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna see if there's a waste period there that we can, okay.
I don't think so.
I was sure you had that covered, but I just couldn't quite understand how the overlap would take place if a person did not show up for theirs, but I appreciate you explaining that to me.
Yes, sir, our nurses are really good at this, we do immunizations all the time, very different, but the flu season, this is something that we're used to, with, now, the flu comes in single doses, um, I'm pretty sure, I'm almost a hundred percent positive, but, um, in the not-so-distant past, it was a multi-dose vial too. So, um, they're very skilled at what they do, and, um, but it is not easy. It is like, uh, juggling, uh, balls and swirling plates at the same time with these products, but we're, um, again, to date, have not discarded a single vaccine, so we're really excited about that.
Lillian, just, um, and I may have missed something here somewhere, but you said, right now, you have no way of making appointments, but you do have a software in place?
Yes, sir, I, I don't know that I said that in the best way, so thank you. Um, we have a software system that we can build appointment slots as we have vaccines. So, for the event that we had this week, we knew we could accommodate with the staff and the vaccines and the time, eleven hundred appointments. So, that's what we had booked, we had to build that ourselves. So, we went into the system, and we said, from eight fifteen to eight forty-five, there are thirty-six slots. From eight forty-five to nine fifteen, there are thirty-six slots. We published it and went live. Individuals could click on the link, they had to just answer a few questions that said, that, uh, confirmed their eligibility, and it gave them the link for the signup. They went there, they looked at the available slots, they booked themselves. We could have five hundred people booking themselves at the same time.
Okay.
When those appointments closed, we closed it down. That system doesn't allow for people to pre-register and get a phone call or anything like that. That's what I meant by saying we don't have a software solution for pre-registered on the list.
Can we, um, have, have, have you talked to Joel about that? Is there a way we can come up with something that could come to you guys, or?
I have heard that the state is working on a solution. Right now, this is the solution that we've been able to find, and we're leading with this solution. Um, so, I don't think that there's another option that we just haven't turned our worst on yet.
I done made him come out of his corner back there.
I, I, I join daily calls on this topic. Yesterday's call pertained to that very question, and then what we were told that they expect this appointment module to be released next week.
That's, that's kind of what we're here to, but I-
Now, whether it works, that's another question.
That's why I'm hesitant to go forward with that, because I have been told
Don't leave, Joel, I'm gonna ask you something.
And then, it doesn't happen, so I don't wanna disappoint the public, or you, um, with saying it'll be here, and then it's not.
So, our biggest problem, what I'm hearing, is you're fielding forty-one hundred phone calls. Some of that could be addressed if we had the ability for people to go online and say, I want, I want the virus, I mean, yeah, I want the vaccine, i- is that correct?
From my standpoint, our biggest problem is supply, we don't have vaccines, so that, that's that. As far as managing people, right now, we're in the seventy-five and plus population, the majority of those people would rather talk to us on the phone. So, they're not, the, the email, the software system is not the bigger hindrance right now. Hindrance right now is, in Davidson County, there are approximately twenty-five thousand people eligible in this current category, and we just don't have the vaccines and the appointments for them.
I, I got you on that, I understand. Joel, if this other thing don't work out with the state, can we create on our website a form that basically would allow me to go in and say, James Shores, I'm this age, or da-da-da-da-da, or whatever your criteria are, and at least get that to you or Lillian so that you know that I want it?
That's not the problem, Commissioner Shores.
Okay, maybe I'm just misunderstanding what the problem is.
The problem is there, if you did exactly what you said, great idea, but we don't have a way to track when you get your vaccine. So, there you sit at home, and you say, I have put my information in, I'm just waiting for the Health Department to call me, unless we have a human being sitting there and then checking you off. Now, Joel might know, and I don't think that there's a solution that, so when we, like I, I said earlier, if we, if you did this, and we had somebody that started on Monday morning, calling these people on the list and checking them off, give you a call, Mr. Shores, guess what, good news, we have an appointment next Monday. Today's Monday, we got an appointment next Monday, we know we have vaccines, can you come? For whatever reason, you're unavailable that day. So, now, we've called you, you're top of the list, but where do you go to get on the bottom of the list? And, if we do this, twenty-five thousand people, that's where our confusion is and our concern, that now you have registered yourself, we called you for an appointment, you weren't able to get it, when do we call you back? How do you feel as someone who was on the top of the list, but then got pushed to the bottom because you weren't available for the first appointment? And then, again, that human being management of trying to find you again to get you back on the appointment, because we don't have a software solution.
You know, where I see the problem is, and thank y'all for what you do, and sincere my appreciations, I know y'all's job is hard, but the problem is, there's only the Health Department giving these vaccines. That's, that's the problem. So, when do you see that the rest of the doctors, uh, people's own physicians will, will have the doses to give the vaccines out, or will that happen?
Two-part answer. Was told today that January eleventh, providers may start receiving, um, information about how to receive vaccine. The, the long explanation I gave to poor Commissioner Shell was, um, about the, the fragility of these and how delicate they are. People who don't do vaccines are not chomping at the bit to get it. And, I'll just tell you, as someone who thinks I'm kind of okay with computers, to actually register for it required hours on the computer to prove to the federal government that we can handle vaccines and we have a plan. And, so, I have heard two things. Number one, it is probably gonna happen January eleventh, where we start to hear more about when local providers will get it, but that a lot of local providers, this is anecdotal, I have not seen a list, we have been told we will get a list of enrolled providers, but I've heard anecdotally, a lot of providers are like, I don't, I, I can't, yeah, just too much for them. Right.
That's pretty good temperature, you know, they may have invested in equipment, I don't know what the doctor's offices have, what they don't have, so it's a logistical challenge.
So, at this point in time, how many will you do today? So, at this point in time, how many will you do today? Vaccines?
I know for the two days, it's one thousand one hundred and eight.
So, about five hundred and fifty a day?
Yes, sir, give or take.
Okay, are you equipped? Like I say, now, we having a problem getting the vaccine. But, let's say, next week, we get fifteen thousand doses of the vaccine. Are we equipped with the health department to administer that many doses per day? Or, are we maxed out now at about five fifty a day? I'm just saying, if, if we don't have private physicians doing this, then how can we gear up, or can we gear up?
Excellent question. Short answer, no, we are not ready for fifteen thousand. Part B of that answer, when we did that complicated, uh, report to the federal government, we told them how much vaccine we could hold and we don't have the capacity for more than about, I'm not the vaccine management person, so I don't know the exact number, but we have to have enough for new doses and second doses when people come in. So, we don't even have a capacity with our own internal equipment and space to have that many. So, we'll never get that many as your health department. Davidson County, with help from providers in the hospital, may get fifteen thousand and then their staff would be responsible for doing that. Another question I've been asked in that same road, let's just say, we did have the capacity and we had enough space for fifteen thousand vaccines. We cannot receive vaccines as the health department and just give them to our friends who are providers and say, "Help us out, call your patients, do it." We have to administer the vaccines that we receive. Or, we can transfer them to enrolled providers. So, that is a complicated process, but could work. So, in an example where primary care practice A is enrolled, but for whatever reason, they're just not getting them. They're, they're asking, they're begging, "Please give them to me," they're not getting them. If we had enough, we could give them to them. And even if we had enough and it would relieve our load and they had people they wanted to give them to, we would be happy to work with them to transfer them our supply as long as they're getting them to people. We certainly don't wanna give them to them and they just sit on them, but we'd be willing to do that. Federal government says, "We cannot give the vaccines that we receive to people who are not enrolled providers because they did not go through that whole upload system of proving, for lack of a better term, that they're el- that they're equipped to receive and distribute vaccines."
Ms. Lillian?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to tell you thank you, uh, for the hard work that you've done and the, uh, you and your staff are completely heroes. We, we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
This week, I had a call from a Lexington city councilman who had said that he's received multiple complaints from, uh, citizens saying that out-of-county individuals were getting, uh, Davidson County vaccinations here. I thank and I hope that they're listening to this meeting. As, uh, as you've explained, a lot of the situations that you are facing are out of your control, uh, not only staffing-wise, but through the, uh, ability to have a software that, that would help our staff. Uh, there's no department that we have in Davidson County that can field forty-one hundred calls in a week and be okay with that. Uh, so, I, I understand that. I hope that they are listening to the meeting right now and that they can see that we're doing everything that we can. There's absolutely no way that we can assure that everything that everybody's saying is correct. That, that's gonna have to be on a state level. Our job is to vac- vaccinate and I think you're doing a fantastic job doing that. I back you, I support you, and I appreciate you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. And I have, um, returned a phone call to a city council member. Um, they left a voicemail, I called them back before I left that evening and have not heard back, so that's probably what they wanted to talk about too. But, the point about residency, when we signed on that we would take these vaccines, we told them, and we had to sign and check, "Yes, I agree," that we could not require residency for anybody. So, we know that there are people that we are vaccinating that don't live in Davidson County. Um, we knew that on day one when we, um, uh, partnered with Lexington Medical Center to vaccinate their frontline healthcare workers who were actually caring for COVID patients. Some of them don't live here. But, it was, their hospital's here and so, we were able to vaccinate them and that happened. Of course, as the Davidson County Health Department and a Davidson County resident, I would love to make sure that our folks got it first, but we are not able to restrict based on residency. Another point to, just to say, a communicable disease does not start, stop at county line. So, the quicker we get everybody vaccinated, if we had a Davidson County resident that lived closer to another county and they were able to get in there, I would hope that they would be able to get that vaccine at another county if it was, um, quicker, easier, and more convenient to them. So, that is, um, where we are with that.
One other question, I'll leave you alone.
Yes, sir.
We got thousands of people wanting this vaccine. How do you foresee this moving in the future, that they can, they gonna be able to get vaccinated? Because, you know, it sounds to me like right now, we're kinda uncertain about the doses and what's coming to the county and what do we need to do as a, if there's anything we can do? They ask questions, "Where's our doses, uh, for our citizens?" I think we getting our news from the news that there's a million doses, I think, coming to North Carolina supposedly right away, is what I think I heard this morning, so.
I, um, am trying very hard to wrap my brain around those exact questions. Um, I, I feel like y'all might have heard this already, but I was completely surprised at our first dose allotment. The conversations that I heard made me think we would receive between two hundred and four hundred doses here. We got two thousand and three hundred. So, that, I mean, that's how surprising it is. Frustration, as a local health director, is multifaceted right now. That may be where it starts, with just, if I knew what I was gonna get, I could put things in place. I could ask for volunteers, I could try to find our providers and ship it to them. We could do things differently if we knew the things we put in place we would have supply for. We are doing these things under the radar, but right now, supply's the issue. So, I wish I could tell you more about what I anticipate, but I anticipated two to four hundred and got twenty-three hundred.
Sure, but do you anticipate in the future that the majority of the people's gonna get their vaccinations through private sector? Would that be what you foresee?
It's gonna have to be. But, if she's the only game in town, we'll never get it done.
Right.
It'll never happen, so, yeah, I'm gonna wait until that forty, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I mean, the, the new administration's got a slogan, "A hundred million doses in a hundred days." It's gonna take a lot of logistical challenges to get that done. But, it's gonna require more people doing the shot than just her.
I also personally received an email last night, um, from, um, medical history, from Novant Health, that said they're doing vaccines now for, uh, 1B1. So, Novant's doing it, um, they, they just have my information, my personal email address because I've been a patient of theirs in the past. And so, my understanding is they, uh, reverse emailed all their patients and said, "If you're in the 1B1, let us know." So, that's good, that's really good news, um, that's another option. They're doing it, I was having a hard time on my phone and it was about ten o'clock last night, so, um, I hope I don't misspeak on this, but I can get this information back to you. But, I think it's Winston and Charlotte where they're providing this. So, not super close for our residents, but for some folks, that is drivable.
Same position Lillian's in with not knowing Mandy Cohen's in the same position. I can tell you that because I was on a conference call with her yesterday. She's in the same boat with the federal government not knowing what she's going to get from week to week. So, it's starting, it's for, it's them. And when they say, when they say things in the news like, you know, they signed a contract for three hundred million doses, I don't know how many of those have been produced. You know, so, it could be a supply and demand problem, we're just actually getting that many viruses, uh, that many vials out, I don't know. Um, but, they're aware of this in terms of it being a logistical kind of a challenge on the ground. And they, and Mandy was aware of that and somebody asked her point-blank from the news conference, you know, about opening up the RBC center perhaps and having mass clinics. She kinda grinned and said, "Yes, we're already trying to work through those things." That presents a challenge though, as Lillian had mentioned, manpower, you know, getting vaccinators, people that are, and she mentioned the word "training," which I don't know if somebody has to go through a training to be able to do that. Um, I can see that being an issue too with not having enough trained people to do, you know, hence the reason why they called up some people from the National Guard.
Let me ask you, the jail has a jail nurse. Would that nurse be qualified to administer those vaccines to inmates within the jail?
I would think-
Was it limited with a, a little training, she came down and?
I would think so. So, if Southern Health Partners, who has our jail health, was an eligible provider, they could get vaccines as Southern Health, then they could give them to all their local jails that they cover and their nurses could do it. Now, if they're not an enrolled provider, we're back in the same boat where if we even have the vaccines here, we can't just give them to those nurses to do it on our behalf.
But, that's contract work.
Yeah, but she's right, we had to get Southern Health Partners to be uploading the federal government system. That sooner or later initiates a head-on crux of the problem. That's gonna have to change, I'm sorry, it will, it's gonna have to, or we'll never get. There won't be seventy percent of the population to get herd immunity. That's three hundred and thirty million people in this country, so we're looking at two hundred million plus to get to that percentage.
Would you, would you be able to decide how many, if, if they were, if they were a provider? Would you be able to? It'd be hard, wouldn't it, with the in and out of the jail?
Commissioner Shell, nothing about this is easy, but we could, we could, if they told us how many people they had and, and we could talk with them about that, and honestly, that's our plan. When the one, when the, we start moving through phases and it's time for the jail, our plan right now is, the jail's our responsibility in Davidson County. We were gonna send a couple nurses out there with doses and do it.
Well, this, this, this sounds horrible, but it's a reality, you know, so we have to deal with. Any, any COVID-positive in our jail, we're responsible for medically. And we're, we're paying the heck out of things, uh, that maybe if we could get them vaccinated, you know, that would cut off that amount of monies, you know, that we wouldn't have to deal with. Um, I would suggest that we contact that, that contract agency, who, Southern, you say? And let's just see what's involved in, 'cause it sound like Lillian's more than willing, just come on down and we'll, we'll teach you. And then, and then when the, the doses are available, we can start targeting the jail and starting to get some of those people, especially those long-termers. There's a lot of long-termers in there that, uh, could save us a lot of medical costs on the other end.
And that's a high-risk area because of the congregate living too. So, uh, they're not in the phases yet, but they will be. And when they are, they will be top of our list to get out there and do it just because, again, our responsibility and the risk, they all live on top of each other.
They just won't, you know, won't do it for whatever reason. We, you know, Lillian's probably gonna have a staffing request soon for at least some office support people to start helping with some of the logistical stuff we're setting and talking about. Don't be shocked if there's some nurses on there too at some point in time.
Do we, we still have some COVID money left?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about doing it with, but it's, uh, it's coming, 'cause this is gonna be weeks and months of doing this.
She gonna have to have help, ain't no way she can do it.
The pace is just right, right now, but it ain't gonna stay that way.
Is RN required, or?
To work at the public health department, you have to have a BSN. Um, now, there's a lot, as Casey said, uh, y'all will be seeing a request from us for some office support staff because the CVMS system that I was talking about, that federal requirement, that's a data entry thing that just takes a while and bless their hearts, everybody's handwriting's not exactly the best. And so, that even takes long to make sure that we get things in correctly. So, data entry will help us with that and answering phone calls and trying to get people registered as appointments are available.
Lillian, if I go to Forsyth Hospital and get my first dose, is there a repository of that information somewhere? So, if I come here to you and try to get a second dose, or even somebody that was trying to, I guess, get an extra shot, do you know that, is there a way that you know that I've already had one shot?
That's that CVMS system I was talking about? And that's why we have to be so meticulous with it because, heaven forbid, we get anything in there incorrectly and like you said, somebody maybe had to go somewhere else or something else and it was in there wrong and then they couldn't get the second dose. So, we have to be so careful, which is, again, why you'll see a request for more staff just to make sure we're doing it right. 'Cause today, I've already heard, bless their hearts, the folks that are outside from the health department, as bundled as they are, it's cold and our computers won't work outside because it's so cold. So, they're having to do it on, uh, paper. Joel, don't freak out, but, but, they tried to like warm them up and it, but it just, it wasn't doing it. So, now, we're on paper. So, that means everybody, even if they were already in the vaccine management system, we're gonna have to go in there and select that they got their dose today, what part of the body they got it on in that thing. Um, and then the ones that weren't in there will just have to completely make them a new one back at the office after the event, within twenty-four hours of the dose. There's that caveat too. So, we can't just sit on the paperwork, which is a good thing because then you get amounts and amounts of paperwork, but that time constraint's tight as well.
I told you a while ago, that was my last question, but I do have a couple more. Tents, are we working out of a tent at the community college? So, they drive up in their tent?
So, okay, the thing about the vaccine, um, there's a fifteen-minute or a thirty-minute observation period after the vaccine to make sure you don't have a reaction. Lots of conversations at our department and our preference is for people particularly in this 1B1 category, seventy-five and older, to come indoors so that we can have eyes on them. Otherwise, they're in their car for their observation period and it's hard to see in a car when you have hundreds of people if someone's having an adverse reaction. So, the event we're doing today is hybrid. There are people going inside, people that have better mobility are going inside, others are in their cars if they can't get out. So, our team is in the tent, they go to the car, they get the information, they do the dose. The car moves up to the observa- I'm sorry, I'm so visual, I'm giving hand signals. But, the car moves up and then that we have, the rescue, uh, team has been there and they're watching to make sure for their time that nobody has a bad reaction. So, hybrid.
Okay, my last question. Uh, how many doses do you anticipate we need in Davidson County?
For everyone?
For, how many do y'all anticipate that is gonna take the, uh, vaccine? And, I mean, what is y'all's projection? Twenty thousand vaccines, fifty thousand vaccines, if, you know?
Two-part answer, because we know we've done some individuals who don't live here, that skews even the best data that we have on folks. 1A category, I would say, we were at about a fifty percent early adopter rate. We've seen several people who were eligible in 1A and made sure that nobody's arm fell off and then they were like, "Yes, I do want the shot too." So, that, that changed. So, our early guestimate of fifty percent eligibility utilization has increased. So, maybe sixty percent there. Hundred and sixty-six thousand-ish residents in Davidson County, I would say, with the fact that we vaccinated some from other counties and the fact that some of ours will go to other counties, I don't know that I could get anywhere closer than twenty thousand, but I would say, uh, eighty, I'm, I'm sorry, probably ninety-five thousand, give or take twenty thousand, which is a big difference. Seventy-five is different from a hundred and fifteen, but-
So, how many?
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand?
Conservatively.
Okay.
You prioritize it by age in terms of the general public and, and vulnerability?
So, what, what I would say with what you just said, right now, it seems that the folks that are eligible, the seventy-five and older, they want the vaccine. I think, um, there's a lot of individuals in that category that really want it. When you get to people who are in the thirty, forty range, who are healthy, who don't think that COVID's gonna be a problem, then we'll probably see utilization for eligible folks. I'm, I'm calling utilization, meaning you're eligible, it's your time, you're eligible. I think that the, um, utilization choice will diminish when we get to the general population. But, right now, surprise, maybe not surprisingly, but we, the eleven hundred appointments booked in forty minutes.
So, in Davidson County, I've seen the number, I can't remember what it, what, what percentage of our population is above fifty years old?
Sixty-five, uh, above sixty-five is eighteen point nine percent. That's what I looked at the, uh, but, when I was trying to plan. And that's how I got that number, twenty-five thousand are eligible right now.
So, that would be the target, plus the people who have very low immune systems?
The state has done the phased pro- uh, process. Phase 1A was just the healthcare workers frontline, those at high risk. Now, we're in an age category. Age right now for 1B1 is seventy-five and older, period. Doesn't matter of any underlying health conditions whatsoever. Phase 1B2, we go into some ages again. You're at fifty years of age or plus and you are a frontline essential worker. So, that's your police, your educators, your, uh, chiropractors, eye doctors, people that are close to people but weren't in that 1A healthcare worker because they're dealing with COVID on a regular basis. Phase 1B3 is that same essential frontline worker, people, also manufacturing, I'm sorry, forgot, because close proximity there. 1B3 is the same work group, but people who are forty-nine and less. So, the way this goes, we start with seventy-five and older. We don't care what you do, what underlying health conditions you may have, it's just seventy-five and older. We move to fifty and up, if you're an essential frontline worker. Then, we move to forty-nine and below essential frontline worker. And I'm afraid to tell you what the next- And I'm afraid to tell you what the next one is, because I'm so concentrated on what this one is, but we've got it on our website, and I can get that to you, but...
And it changes, by the way. Are the hospitals getting any vaccines?
The vaccine, um, Wake Forest Baptist Health and Novant, who are in Davidson County, did receive vaccines to their parent organizations. To my knowledge, there are none in Davidson County unless they're at the community college right now, or at our building, because nobody else has them, is my best understanding.
Did they administer it to their personnel?
No, sir, we didn't.
Seems like that would protect them first.
Well, so the way that, that, I, uh, I am very fortunate to have great relationships with both of our hospitals. And so I was early on able to email them when I found out, "Oh, wow, we're getting way more than we expected." So I was like, since we have so many in the 1A, we, we reached out to the folks that we knew we needed to, um, here. We're like, "We're gonna have enough if y'all want them for your staff." And Wake Forest Baptist Health said, "You know, that's probably a really good idea, because with the number of people we have, and the fact that, you know, then we, they would have to go to Winston to get them." They're like, "If you can come here, we'd love to have you." So that's what we did. We went there and did their folks. Again, that protects our whole community for anybody that needs to be seen at the hospital. If we can get their staff inoculated, so that they don't have to worry about staffing shortages because of COVID, that helps us all. So we were very happy to do it. We were glad that they wanted us to do it, because a lot of the people that we talked to said, "Well, I could have gotten an appointment, but it would be more than a month from now." And these are people that are working in the ER.
What about Novant?
Novant was doing it themselves. They had a process that worked for them.
That's good.
Same offer was given.
It helps out with our overall, too.
I'm sorry?
It helps out with our overall.
Yes, sir. It does.
Thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Great job, Lillian.
Thank you.
Just amazing.
Thank you so much for everything you guys are doing.
You're welcome. We're trying really hard. So ask me questions, uh, email, text, whatever. Um, we're a little slower than we'd like to get back to folks, but we're, we're, we're answering questions as quickly as we can, so. And it, it, things change, as the manager said. So I'm, I need to be better about dating everything that we put out, because we are seeing changes in the phases that I was just explaining to Commissioner Shell. That's why I don't know what the next one is, because two weeks ago, the phases were very different. And so now, with the, the phases, we're just trying so hard to make sure we don't do anything incorrectly.
They're different from each state. The federal government didn't prescribe these phases. They left it to the states to do. So if you hear on the news that Wisconsin has a different phase, you're going to hear that. Don't be shocked by that. I'm just letting you know, as you get calls. Um, remember, and I don't want to belabor this either, I want to thank her for what she does, too. I was over at the clinic New Year's Eve, Court of Service, they were still going. I don't know what they did after I left, so they were still cooking over there. Uh, this is the biggest vaccination project in human history. Remember that. Just, I mean, whenever we run into these speed bumps, um, and also remember, we're dancing with two other partners, the federal government and the North State and Carolina, so, who are dictating the terms of the game to us. And it's gonna be slow for a little while, I can tell you that, you know? But we, as far as I, you know, Lillian, the call yesterday with Mandy Cohen, they preached about some counties are ahead, some are behind. I have a feeling we're one of the ones ahead. So we're, and they made a comment, "If you're not gonna use the vaccines, we're gonna take them from you." I don't think we're gonna run that risk anytime soon. But as we graduate, get more, we may need more staff, we may need some more logistical things to keep this process going. And that'll help us get it out, more and more and more.
Yeah.
Lillian, last thing, is there anything we can do to help you as far as getting this out? Our contacts, anything we can do to help you in any way?
When we go into new phases, it's always nice to help, um, increase the footprint for the information, so people know what's available. The other thing I would just say, y'all are all very well-connected individuals, you know? Just, if, when you have conversations, if you can just say, "I've talked to the health director. Everybody there's working to their capacity. We really are working hard, and we want to do more. Um, and we will not stop until we get everybody vaccinated." The other thing that's really important, too, right now, in phase 1B1, we have seventy-five and older. We are not going to go to the next phases until we complete this most vulnerable population. So there's this anxiety that I didn't get in, I'm gonna miss my chance, they're gonna start vaccinating forty-year-olds next. No, we're gonna stick with the phases until we complete them before we move to the next. And when I say "complete," that's an inaccurate word, but when we slow down so much that we have capacity to start adding the next phase in, that's what we'll do.
Fantastic. Well, thank you again.
That's good information.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And, uh, Casey, you can be at the community college, if you need me.
Anybody else have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got one question, or one comment. Uh, I want to commend Lillian also on what she's doing and what she has done. The appointment, uh, line that she set up, uh, and accepting appointments in Davidson County is so far ahead. I was talking to someone, I mentioned to the health board the other day. I was talking to someone, and I believe it was Wake County. And they, they got, well, they got more vaccines than we got, but they just opened it up. They said, "We got the vaccines, come on and get in line." People were in line, two miles long. Some of them had blankets and quilts and pillows, that they camped out all night to get the vaccine, knowing that when they got to the front of the line, they were already out of vaccines. Uh, so we haven't run into that here in Davidson County. Taking these appointments and setting them up, it seems like we're going a little bit slower. But, uh, it's, it's so much better for the, uh, general public, and I do want to commend her for that. Uh, we're, I think we're doing a great job. Uh, you know, I'd like to see it going faster also. I've talked to Casey about it, I've talked to some doctors about it. They're concerned about it, too. The, what Lillian said is true. Most of you doctor's offices are not equipped for this type vaccine. That's why Walgreens doesn't have it now. They're not equipped for it. They was equipped to give out flu shots, but this stuff requires so much regulations that they just can't do it. So that's why I want, uh, Lillian shoulders right now. And, uh, I agree with what you have just said, and I appreciate everybody saying it. We do what we can to help her, and I, I don't think we've turned her down on anything, so... I think she realizes, here, anything that we can to help her. So thank you, Lillian.
Thank you, Commissioner Tull. It's great to see your face.
Good, thank you. We're gonna get together for so with.
Yes, sir.
You know, one, one, one more, I do have one more question. I, this was asked me yesterday, and I almost forgot it. If, and, and I don't know how it's working this morning, but if you've got a line of traffic out into, uh, out into the highway, and you've got a ten o'clock appointment, and you're in the back of the line, how do you get up to the tent, uh, to get to that, uh, appointment? Someone asked me that, and I, I didn't know what to tell them.
That was a great question, and hindsight being 2020, uh, totally should have addressed that in our communications. But, uh, you got an appointment, you're in line, we're gonna get you. Because, again, the appointments are, uh, built out on the supply that we have. So we have vaccines for everybody that shows up with an appointment. Um, and if they can't get through the line quick enough, it, we may have overbooked ourselves, and that was a concern. We tried to map it out, pretending that we were ninety years old, and how long it would take us to get through. But you, um, that was a fun experiment. But when we did that, we thought that we could handle thirty-six appointments every thirty minutes, with a couple of spots that were less than that. And it turns out, from what I've heard, not being there, that the traffic is a nightmare. So we told people to arrive thirty minutes ahead of time. If they arrive thirty minutes ahead of time, and they're not through, we're still gonna get them if they're on the appointment list, Commissioner Tull. So we'll make sure, in fact, I've got, uh, Facebook app on my phone. I'll put that on there now, so people know that, when you know that traffic's slow, we'll get you with your appointment, even if you're not able to get to the door at time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sweetie.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Y'all take care.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
It's a mood.
I have a, I have a motion and a second roll call vote. Do you need it? Everybody say yay.
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 Oh, that was a moan. I never heard it.